This meeting is held in accordance with NJSA 10:4-12, the Open Public Meetings Act. I would like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Espinoza, are there any sunshine announcements to share?
Yes, in accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, notice has been given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, El Especialito, and posted with the city clerk on Tuesday, October 22nd. We have the notices to be marked. This is B1 for the record.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Espinoza, will you please take roll call?
Yes, so I see Commissioner Barron, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Shadid, Vice Chair Arujo.
Here.
Did I say Commissioner Burns?
Here.
And Chair Coyle.
Commissioner Zablicki.
Oh, and Commissioner Zablicki.
Here.
And Chair Coyle.
Present.
We have a total of seven commissioners tonight.
Okay. Can everyone please stand for the flag? So.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, Bridgette, can you please swear in any staff members that are in attendance tonight?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you're about to give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Espinoza, would you please advise if there are any correspondence and/or adjournments that we need to know about?
Yes, so in, other than adjournments, in new business, we do have several items that have requested to carry, starting with item number nine. This is case Z2024-0007. The address is 659 Jersey Avenue. They've decided to carry to the November 14th meeting with preservation of notice. Item number 10, case Z2023-0019. The address is 136 Delaware Avenue. They've decided to carry to the November 14th meeting with preservation of notice. And lastly, item number 11. This is case Z20, Z20, well, Z22-078. The address is 140 Glenwood Avenue. They've also carried to the November 14th meeting with preservation of notice. And then the rest of the items on the agenda will be moving forward.
Thank you. Before we begin hearing the items on tonight's agenda, I have two announcements to make relating to time. No new matter involving an applicant will be started after 10:00 p.m. We will have a hard stop at 10:00 p.m. this evening. And during the public comment portion of this meeting, speakers from the community will be held to three minutes. I will ask Commissioner Ahmed Shadid to keep track of time, and he will advise each speaker when he or she has one minute remaining for comments. Our first case tonight is Z2024-0055, and I believe Mr. Vertibello will be presenting.
Chair Coyle, before we begin, I do want to say, this is the first time we've actually had a large crowd like this. It's out of the meeting, but early registration for voting is on Saturday. So if you are registered to vote, 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 and then we can continue back to our regular scheduled meeting. Thank you. Yes.
Okay.
What day is Grobich tonight?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, good evening. For the record, Robert Vertibello from the law firm of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant. This is a request to extend previously approved preliminary and final site plan approval for the property located at 2 Hoboken Avenue in Jersey City. Before we begin, though, since variances were granted as part of the original site plan application and an abundance of caution, even though all we're asking for this evening is an extension of those approvals and there are no changes to the plans, we did notify the public of the hearing this evening, both by notification to the property owners within 200 feet and also through the Jersey Journal. Also because of the unique sighting of the property on the border of Hoboken and Jersey City, we also submitted notification to the Hoboken City Clerk and to property owners within the city of Hoboken. I have the original affidavit and proof of service and mailing that was uploaded to the Tyler system, but we can also mark this exhibit as Exhibit A1 this evening.
Yes, why don't we do that? We'll give it to Bridgette.
Does Board Counsel want a review, or?
No, no, it's fine.
Okay, thank you. So again, this is a properties. I don't know how many of you were on the board when we were here previously. Originally, we received preliminary and final site plan approval back in 2018 in the pre-COVID days. We then amended it twice, once in 2020 and once in 2022. Those were both administrative amendments due to reorientations within the building itself. However, the building itself is still a 13-story building. It has been throughout the process. Because of the final site plan approval in 2022, our period of approval is now expiring, and we're asking for an extension. During this period, again, because of the unique sighting of this property on the border of Hoboken and Jersey City, there are a number of infrastructure considerations that are underway. We've been working with the Jersey City Municipal Utilities Authority. We also have to work with the city of Hoboken because of certain utilities that are on the Hoboken side of the border. There's also the rebuild-by-design project that's going on in Hoboken, which we've had to work through as well. So all that has been a lot of preliminary work that has to get done before we can finalize our plans, and that's why we need the additional time here this evening.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to make any comments concerning the extension? Okay, if not, then I will close this public portion of the meeting. Do any commissioners have any comments to make? Questions? Okay. Can I get a motion?
I motion. I make a motion to approve a two-year extension with Z2024-055 to Hoboken Avenue.
I'll second.
Second, okay. Are there any staff comments?
Yeah, we just, staff just request that the applicant agree to comply with the conditions associated with the original approval.
Yes, that's not a problem.
Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. Espinoza?
Okay, on a motion to approve, Commissioner Barron?
Aye.
Commissioner Boyle?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadid?
Aye.
Commissioner Zablicki?
Aye.
Vice Chair Arujo?
Aye.
And Chair Coyle?
Aye.
Oh, I keep forgetting. Commissioner Burns. Sorry. I'm just gonna look at you guys. I'm reading off the list. Was that a?
That was a yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, good luck. Okay. Okay, this is a big one. Okay. Okay, our next order of business is case number Z, I have the wrong paper, Z20-043, 201 Newark Avenue. And Mr. Harrington will be presenting this evening or presenting to us, okay?
Yes, thank you. For the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant. I do have the original notices that I can provide to counsel.
I've reviewed them, so why don't we give them to Bridgette and have them mark as A1? Chuck, you just give us a heads up. And how many witnesses do you have here?
We have a total of, one, two, three, four, five. We have five, five witnesses. One witness will be our traffic engineer as well as our planner, same person. So I have my client will be our first witness, then my civil engineer, then my architect, then my traffic engineer, who was also my planner, will follow up. And that, those are our list.
And now, who is the young lady that called me who's in opposition, the attorney? Is she here?
Yes.
Who is she? There she is, hello.
Thank you very much for calling me. My husband's here with me.
Oh, it's very good. Oh, it's a young lady.
He got to hear it.
Yeah.
Yes.
I was on the subway the other day, and I was standing, and some young lady said, looked at me, she goes, sir, would you like to sit down?
No, not this, now, yes.
I said, no, that's okay, stay there.
Thank you. Yes, of course, it's Anne Studholm. And that's A-N-N-E-S-S-S-A-M-T-U-D-H-O-L-M-E. And I'm with the law firm of Post Pollock, P.A., in Roseland. I can give you more information if you.
So now, how many witnesses do you have?
I'm going to have five, including our planner, Cray Randcamp, who's there, so four. Essentially, two experts, two fact witnesses, plus our planner.
Okay, and now, who do you represent? I guess it's really whom do you represent, right?
Whom do I represent?
Yes.
I represent the homeowners association of the Safran, which is the immediately adjacent building at 217 Newark is its address, but it's immediately adjacent.
Okay.
The walls would be right adjacent.
So when and if we get to public comment, those people in that building who you represent cannot comment? Because their comments come through you?
Oh, they can. I have warned them that you might take that position that not merely the HOA board members, but that actually residents of the building would have to put their essentially commentary on as testimony. I would introduce them and say, who are you? I don't necessarily know them. Oh, I might introduce them, they could give, they could essentially talk, but they would be technically witnesses if you chose that. And I'm perfectly happy to go along with that. I don't think that would be a problem. My understanding is there are quite a few people in the audience from the building. I may not have met them yet. And my understanding is also there's a lot of people from the general neighborhoods.
The general neighborhood, I understand. But it's the building. If you're representing the building, so to speak.
Exactly.
Well, I just don't want.
Sorry.
Yeah, I just don't want to hear, not that I don't want to hear, but since there's a lot of people here, you're speaking for them. You're speaking for the building. So I can't imagine somebody in the building, unless somebody in the building is going to come up and say, I don't agree with this. That's a different story. But if they all agree with you, we don't need to hear 10 people say, I agree.
Well, I would actually, for the record, like them to put their name and address on the record.
Well, they could do that.
Yes, exactly.
That's fine.
And if they have some, if they have some area of testimony or comment that I haven't covered, I mean, shame on me, but that can almost happen. And so, yes, rather than pick nits about, do I represent the board? Do I represent the residents? I'm fine with that. One of the things I wanted to mention, I don't know if Chuck would agree with this, maybe a little premature, and you might consider it now or you might wait to see how long Chuck's case takes. Again, as essentially a member of the public, I will be, I call it cross-examination, but, you know, I have the opportunity to question Chuck's witnesses. My understanding is what you tend to do is have all your witnesses go, and then questions from the board, staff, and then the public.
The questions from the commissioners will be held to the end, as well as comments from the staff.
And by to the end, do you mean the end of all of his witnesses?
It would be the end of when we're finished with hearing the entire case, including public speaking.
Okay. Because members of the public, and I think I do want to draw the distinction between members of the public who are outside our building, members of the public who are outside our building have a due process right also to cross-examine, just as I.
That's correct. Nobody's saying they don't.
Exactly. And, but I'll handle it.
All we're saying is that, all we're saying is that it's gonna be a long night like this. Why don't we get going? All we're saying is that we usually let the applicant put his witnesses on first, and then the public can get to cross-examine them if they want.
If they want to. And then the other thing I was gonna say is depending on how lit it gets, because there are a lot of people here, you might say, and with all due respect, we want to hear from some members of the public, and then they don't have to come back next time. I don't know if that's an issue for them. I just wanted to raise it. And I think, once we're done with all of Chuck's witnesses on the cross, then you can see if you want to do that for the public, but it's a way to accommodate them, rather than especially if I'm just gonna get to start and I'm not gonna get to Cray, then they don't have to come back.
Right.
That's, I'm just putting that out. We'd be happy if you wanted to do that.
All right, then let's get started.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Mr. Harrington?
Okay, thank you, so.
Should I give it? Her? When did she start? How many minutes should I give it?
You can't put a timeline on her. Only the witnesses. Only the public, I mean.
Okay. So as you can see from the agenda case number, it's Z20. So that means we filed this in 2020. So we have been working on this for some time. There's been a lot of iterations of the plans. We have been working with the planning department. We have met with the community. You'll obviously hear from them tonight. You know, we have made changes to address some of their concerns. I'm sure, you know, they're here tonight, so we haven't addressed, you know, all of their concerns. But we've also been working, as I said, with the planning department, with the city engineers. So the project you see tonight is a result of working with the city traffic engineers and their civil engineers, and with planning, and with historic preservation officer. Maggie O'Neil had a lot to do with her review of what we're presenting tonight. And what we are presenting tonight is it's the property we refer to as 201 Newark Avenue. It is in the NC1 zone. It's in downtown. It's located at the corner of Newark Avenue and Jersey Avenue. And it's located directly west of the pedestrian plaza that was created within the last few years down there and actually then extended most recently to Jersey Avenue. It didn't go all the way to that point initially. And it consists of, it was the former Capital One Bank, right there on the corner. And it has a unique little Maxwell Street is in between Columbus Drive and Newark Avenue. And then you have this kind of, it's almost like a, you know, a service street, if you will, one way. And then it has a surface parking lot directly to the west. So that's your property existing. The Capital One building hasn't been used in some time. My client does own the property, and you'll hear from him tonight. He's, you know, this is, this is what he does. He owns restaurants, he owns hotels. He is in the hospitality business. He has roots here in Jersey City. And, you know, he's looking to create something special here. And what we're proposing tonight is a, it's a nine-story building. And one of those, one of those stories is a mezzanine level, because under the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance, mezzanines are counted as stories, regardless of how big they are. So it's a hotel use, the predominant use. 72 rooms, a restaurant, 36 parking spaces, and a number of other complimentary uses that I'm gonna have my client speak to. So you're, what we're presenting tonight is not just a typical hotel. You know, it's not the Holiday Inn as you come out of the Holland Tunnel. It's, this is a boutique hotel that we really think is special. And all these uses that we're gonna talk about, if it's approved, those run with the approval and run with the land. So it's not, you know, my client is gonna operate this, but if, for some reason, down the road it was ever transferred, these items would all stay with it. So I think that's important because it really is something, something special. And as you note, too, you'll see during the presentation, we say it's a nine-story building, but on the south side of the building, it's lower. And that's by design. That is a result of us looking at this and trying to mitigate the effects of shadows on the Safran building that they have Anne here to represent them. So, you know, in short, it's, the proposal tonight is just, it's not for a standalone hotel. It's for a boutique hotel that we believe is consistent with the commercial corridor here downtown in Newark, on Newark Avenue. We believe this is gonna be a signature building. We hope you do, too. And it'll be interesting if, you know, if approved, because it's something that can identify where the pedestrian plaza starts. If you're walking down Columbus Drive or you're walking, you know, in Harpsmith Cove, you say, well, where does a pedestrian plaza start? Well, you know, you could, you'll be able to say it. You know, we're not hiding that in nor the building. But it also, it's an interesting and a unique application before you because part of it is the adaptive reuse and restoration of the Capital One building. And these buildings are difficult to adaptively reuse. I mean, you have, I'm sure, you know, you've all been to one. It's either downtown or up on Central Avenue. I think Monticello Avenue has one as well. And you walk in, and they've got these grand ceiling, you know, floor-to-ceilings. And, you know, how do you do that? You know, do you chop it up and try to create residential within there? Or, which kind of, you know, gives a little bit of a Frankenstein, you know, effect inside. But we're doing, I think what we're doing is really using it to its potential, but you're using the building with its existing bulk and existing height. So that, that's the starting point here. We, you know, we have this building that's, I believe it's around 50 feet. My architect will address that later. But you're dealing with that right off the bat. So we're using that and incorporating it into the hotel use and all the other uses and trying to create a great, a great project. But that being said, we think the property and the building are particularly suited for this use because of its location, because of the bones that you're working with, with the Capital One building. We think it's gonna be an economic engine for downtown and the city. We think it's gonna be an employment-driving use because typically you get hotel, you know, Mr. Cretella could tell you, and I know from other projects, hotel uses like to have their employees close because you don't want to get them stuck in a snowstorm, you know, 45 minutes away. You need people on-site. So I think it's gonna drive a lot of jobs here. We also think, you know, it's, you know, in the grand scheme, it's almost like a middle point between downtown, where you have the Grove Street Pass Station to the east, you've got White Eagle Hall to the west, and this is almost like a connector. You know that, you know, the west side of Newark Avenue has been developed over the years, started probably 10 years ago with, you know, the five-story developments and the six-story developments. And then White Eagle Hall got restored, and you have everything going on up by Grove Street. So this is really, you know, almost like a connector between the two with the commercial uses. Now, we are asking for a use variance for the hotel use because it's not specifically listed as a hotel use. It is a retail service. You know, so that's consistent with the intent of the plan. And I say that, too, because in other parts of the city, in the Journal Square redevelopment plan, the zoning officer has a pin that you can put a hotel in a certain office bonus area under the umbrella of a retail service. So, you know, we're kind of, we're kind of there where it's really, it really is a retail service. There are other commercial centers, neighborhood commercial centers within the city, NC2 and NC3. They both specifically permit hotels. The NC3, although, you know, this isn't an NC3 zone, but it's similar in that it's got minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. We have a 13,000-square-foot lot here, and that permits hotels up to 110 feet in height. We think this is probably analogous. It wasn't, it wasn't changed to NC3, but I think, you know, if you look overall, that this could very well just be, you know, mapped as an NC3 zone because it's consistent with that intent throughout the city. So, yeah, we're asking for the use variance. We're asking for a height variance because we're asking for the nine stories. The maximum permitted stories is five and 64 feet in height. We're asking for relief for the loading zone because we proposed to have it interior, but we don't have an official loading zone, but we will have loading in, inside and outside of the garage. And then there's some variances with regard to the signage. But, and you'll see during the presentation, we believe the height, you know, is consistent, you know, with the intent of the height limitations. Yes, it's higher. It's 119 feet versus 64 feet. But you'll see, it's the corner lot right there at the intersection of Jersey and Newark Avenue and the pedestrian plaza. We've taken great pains to, you know, Uh, we've, um, taken great pains to, you know, lower the building to mitigate the, any, any effect on the shadows. So you'll, you'll see that during the presentation. Um, and we hope that, um, you know, you agree with us that it's, it's a terrific project. Um, so that, that being said, I'm, I'll start off with our witnesses. And my first witness is going to be my client, um, Frank Cretella. Uh, cause I want Mr. Cretella to, to explain to the board a little bit about himself, but, um, and his experience, but also all these other items that, that we really want to, want to put, that, you know, our, our proposal is part of this building.
Hi, everybody.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Frank Cretella, C R E T E L L A, 48 Manor Court, Staten Island, New York. Thanks.
If you could indulge us, we're, we just want to, um, hook up the computer for, as part of the presentation.
I'm going to start anyway, but, uh, thank you, everybody. I really appreciate your time. I know it's unusual for an applicant to testify, but I feel this is much more than just a, a real estate development. This is a business which is a living, breathing, um, entity. I mean, it, it employs people. It, um, gives jobs and careers. Um, there's a lot going on inside a building like this. Um, it's taken a long time for us to get here. Uh, I think we owned this building for probably over five years now. But, uh, during that time, we've made a lot of improvements and changes into the plan. Um, full disclosure, the building is not historic, but we've always treated it as if it was historic. Um, we've been asked because of the height, uh, by some of the immediate residents, you know, could you take it down and, you know, lower the building? And that, that's something that I wouldn't do, uh, but I also feel that the city would not allow it as well. Um, we have a history of restoring and giving new life through adaptive reuse of historic buildings. We put hospitality enterprises in these buildings and it preserves them. We've done dozens of projects, most of which have been, um, closed buildings that we reopened with a new use. And, and it's successful and, and, you know, it could be generational that these buildings survive now because they do have an active business that could support them. Cause historic buildings, as we all know, it takes quite a bit to maintain an historic building. Um, some of the good aspects of what we do, like the good citizenship of what we do. Uh, the, the hotel is programmed to have a lot of sust, sustainability within it. We have, uh, things like, uh, instead of bottled water, we have purified water taps. Bottled water, sorry.
Let me, let me interrupt you just for the record, if we could mark this, uh, slide deck as, uh, A2?
Okay.
Yes.
I didn't see that.
And if you want to refer to it, Mr. Cretella, you can ask Maeve to go to the correct, whatever.
No, that's fine. So, you know, free bicycles for people to use. Uh, like I said, the water filtration system that, um, in everybody's room where they can fill a thermos that will supply them. It'll have, uh, kitchen gardens on the roof that'll help to supply the restaurant. So there's quite a bit that we do, charging stations within the garage. Um, benefits to the city are also, uh, pretty outstanding. Obviously there's no tax abatement, uh, being sought after. And in addition to real estate tax, there's a 6% hotel tax that we will, um, collect and, and, uh, turn over to the city. Um, our plan includes components that, um, will generate sales tax for the city, like the restaurant and the rooftop. Um, and we're an active employer, you know, which I view as an asset to the city. Um, we have, um, a non-for-profit hospitality school called Art of Hospitality. And we have a location in Jersey City. We have a location in Plainfield. Uh, we just opened up one in Summit. And, uh, this will also have a classroom, which would be a little bit more downsized. But this will aid in, um, training and apprenticeship programs for full hospitality at the site. So I view that as a, a benefit for the city. Uh, also a benefit for the other restaurants in the area because we'll be training people, uh, from the area that can have employment there. Everybody knows how difficult it is to get, uh, for hospitality. Um, so benefits to the community, let's start with the businesses. So studies prove that boutique hotels, uh, generate foot traffic to the local commercial districts. Um, studies prove it, and it seems kind of natural that it would. Studies also prove that, uh, clients of a boutique hotel will spend more money than a flagged hotel, um, in their stay, you know, hopefully spending it in the community. Um, our hotels also market the local businesses. Uh, we run with a video monitor in all the elevators. Those monitors promote the different businesses and the different extractions in the, um, immediate area. We have an app that we use and in that app is a compendium, again, that highlights all the businesses in the area. Our concierge team makes reservations at all the local hotels. So it, it's a positive addition to the business district. Um, we also do a lot of cross promotions. We do these lobby takeovers where different businesses, uh, will come in and show their wares or hand out samples to the hotel guests. Um, we also, uh, do, you know, tap takeovers and cocktail takeovers where local bartenders and local chefs would come in and there'll be a collaboration on a dinner. Um, we also, um, have a art gallery in the building. It's a free art gallery. That art gallery is going to be, uh, a mix of iconic artwork from, um, the likes of Bansky and, um, Keith Haring. Um, and then it'll also have a rotating, that'll be a permanent installation. It'll have a rotating show of local artists. I mean, part of what we're trying to do is to promote the local art scene, uh, which is vibrant. We're not going to, we, we just want to continue its vibrancy in Jersey City. Um, we also, uh, have a program where, um, traveling, uh, groups that are performing in Jersey City can stay in our, um, hotel for free. You know, it's another way to support the arts. Um, and, you know, they're in close proximity right now. There's, there's a few less than 10 minutes in walking distance to the proposed hotel. Um, in keeping with the Albion as, uh, a core of a community, a community hub, uh, our lobby, and we just did this, we just opened recently in Summit. Our lobby is expansive and we make our lobby a co-work space. We make it very convenient for anybody to come in and to work there. We have a coffee station, coffee bar, free wifi. We even have some private, um, conference rooms that they can rent if they wanted to, um, you know, set aside and have a meeting. So many people working from home, this is a little bit of a break to get out of the house or to meet clients. Um, so I view that as a, um, a real positive. Um, something interesting, we have an association with the Stone Pony. So in the, uh, building, we're going to do a Stone Pony recording studio. And we think that that'll add, you know, we'll get a lot of, um, established acts. I feel to come in and to use a recording studio, especially since the Stone Pony itself would be managing it. But more importantly, I feel that the mission of the Stone Pony has always been to support local talent. So this will be another avenue where the Stone Pony can support local New Jersey talent by offering the recording studio for these acts. The, um, adjacent to the Stone Pony recording studio is Podcast Studios. Podcast Studios, so many people are doing it now. Obviously it's, it's a great way to drive the right kind of traffic, but we're committed to make the Podcast Studios free to local residents and free to New Jersey influencers. So that's another added benefit. Uh, there's a pool and fitness, uh, center and a, uh, aerobic studio. The, um, the gym is a Peloton and tonal gym. Um, that is going to be available again to the local community. Um, and we're trying to de, define local community today, you know, is a two-block radius, but that would also be available to them on a day pass. So on the rooftop, we have, it's mostly enclosed because we're very conscious about noise. It's mostly enclosed and it's programmed, I call it more of adult programming with, uh, piano and jazz. And that's going to be the music. We're not looking to have something that's going to run late into the, you know, into the night. Um, so it's, it's more of a place where you would go before or after dinner. It's not a place that I think you would make a destination. There's not going to be, um, food service, so you're not going to really be there to eat a meal. It's, it's an asset to bring people and give them one additional thing to do in their evening out. So as a company, we already have quite a few existing programs that we do. And, and they're listed in here, and I just don't want people to think that these programs that I'm going to talk about are here just so that we can gain support or approval. These, these are things that we do now in, uh, most of our, all of our restaurant locations. Uh, we have a program called HUG, Help Us Give, and we take 10% of, uh, the three most popular tables. And that money accumulates and we host community events. And we give donation checks to local, uh, charities. Uh, so that's something that'll be here as well. Um, we also, my wife's very involved with the Restaurant Association. And when she was chairman, she expanded, uh, we do this autism program. We do it at seven of our places now. Um, we partner up with a local, uh, school. Um, I'm trying to think, regional daycare is one that we do a lot with. And, uh, we train them. They come in the mornings, we train, we've hired out of that program. But that's something that we're passionate about and something that we would continue with here. Um, we have that nonprofit school that I talked about, Art of Hospitality. And that's a great, you know, that truly is our legacy is the school and the success of the people that'll come out of that school. And, um, you know, we're, we're proud of it, how it's grown. But I'm also proud of it how we integrated, uh, the school into our culture at Landmark. So we try to view where every position is just the path toward a career. Uh, we even have classes that, uh, teach entrepreneurship for that step even outside of the company. So, um, you know, that, that's a positive and I'm proud that we were able to find the space, uh, to do a classroom here. We would definitely do the apprenticeship program here too. We also, generally, we give our spaces for free. We also supply refreshments for free. We do a lot of this for local community groups to give them a place to have meetings. So that's a benefit. So I, I hope you believe that the claims that we're making and what we're going to do, uh, are true and sincere and that we do them in other places. And I just want you to be aware that I know that any approval that we get, these items are going to be in that approval and we'll live by them. And the land, regardless of who owns it, will have to live by them. So we're aware of that. Um, I do want to touch on, um, the process that got us here. We have done no less than a dozen different reconfigurations of this project. Um, we pulled, uh, a couple of months ago from coming on here to meet with you. Uh, we pulled our project once again. And, um, we did another redesign. We had gotten some new blood on our team. Um, we re-looked at the shadow studies that we had. And, um, we came up with a plan, uh, that's submitted now that lowers the south side by two levels. Raises, and that's why we're nine stories now, raises the other side because we wanted to maintain that 72-unit count and keep the amenities. Um, so the shadow now, and, and there'll be testimony and there's a model. The shadow now really mimics if an as-of-right building was built there. Um, I know there's a lot of things in press where the community groups are against different aspects of a hotel. Um, you know, I found out very quickly that this community sticks together, rightfully so. And I, I believe there's seven different groups that make it up. Um, you're going to hear talk about traffic. Uh, I'll tell you right now, the traffic to this is minimal. Uh, parking, um, I, at first, when planning had asked us to reduce parking, I doubted it. I, um, I did speak to, uh, a friend, uh, who owns two hotels in Jersey City about what his feeling is about traffic and parking. And his thing is he promotes valet parking. He promotes it in every reservation that happens. And even with that, he's parking a thousand cars a month for 362 hotel rooms. He's back to a vibrant occupancy rate even to where they were, uh, pre-COVID. Um, so if you equate that down to our 72 rooms, that comes down to seven cars a day. So I view that more than a traffic study. I, you know, to me, that's reality, you know? Um, you also, you're probably going to hear testimony because we did meet with the community group and they're going to say, well, you didn't do everything we said. It's very difficult in these community groups. Um, you know, you'll have four architects give you four different opinions. You're going to piss at least three of them off, you know, when you make your changes. You're not, you can't do everything to make everybody happy. Um, and I, I also feel too that because the group is so organized and used to fighting development. And, you know, I don't follow it all that much. I'm sure that there's a lot of things that they're on the right side when it comes to that. But you get asked things like, you know, here we are adding all these amenities, you know, art galleries. We're doing an artist and resonance program. And you get asked for communities that are blocks and blocks away, we want a park. We want a playground. We want a dog walk. It's, it's a little broken, you know, if, if you go through the process as a, a person who's trying to get a project approved. So, uh, in closing, I guess I would just say that the real issue is with saffron. And I, I agree with that and I, I respect that. And it always is the case that your closest neighbor is the one that's most impacted. Um, so, you know, all the other stuff, you know, viewer's noise, um, the impact on the shadow is what needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Okay, and, um, Ms. Chairman, we're going to wait until the presentation is over, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so then, uh, I'll move right along and my next witness is Mark Chisvet. He's our civil engineer and he'll get set up. Sure. Is there, there cable for?
That's why I'm an engineer.
Bear with me one second. I despise touchpads, so I have a mouse here to help me along with these things. Okay.
Would you raise your right hand this far? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Mark, M A R K, Chisvet, C H I S V E T T E. And I'll just point out for the record, I've been here a, a lot of times. My address has changed recently. If you need that information on the card, I just handed to you.
Chisvet has, has appeared before this board and the planning board a number of times.
Yeah, we accept his credentials and his expertise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Say, Mark, if, uh, if you could walk us through the site?
Sure. Um, before I get to that, um, what you're looking at is our cover page. And I do want to point out a discrepancy that was pointed out to me earlier today. On our zoning table, um, we erroneously stated the height, uh, based on an older version of the plan. And just to correct that, um, it is nine floors and total height is 119.73 feet. That's, that's what's on the architect's plans and we will correct ours to match that. That's the correct, that's the correct height. So I'm just going to, uh, show you the, the key map for a moment, just you get an idea of the orientation of this, of this. Uh, I'll zoom in a little bit so you can see, uh, the orientation of, of where this site is. Um, Newark Avenue, um, is to the north of the site. Uh, Jersey Avenue is to the east side of the site. And to the south of the site is a, is a one-way street goes, which is, uh, directed away from Jersey Avenue, which is, uh, called Maxwell Street. And Newark Avenue, uh, the plaza portion, uh, of Newark Avenue starts just to, just to the east of that intersection. So Newark Avenue going east has no traffic in this, at that, on that block. Uh, that's just to give you perspective of where this, where this property is. I'm going to move to the, uh, the site plan and, um, the site plan's orientation is a little bit different. It's turned 90 degrees. So as you're looking at this plan, uh, Jersey Avenue is at the bottom of the page and Newark Avenue is to the right. Maxwell Street is to the left and north is, is to the upper right. Um, there are a number of site improvements. Uh, some of them are a little, uh, unusual, um, from some of the work that we've done in the past. And I wanted to do, point them out. But, uh, two, two fundamental, uh, site improvements that we're making is that we are, um, actually going to narrow the, uh, Newark Avenue pavement and provide more sidewalk area. So basically there's a bump out and on Newark Avenue of approximately eight feet. And that will, uh, allow for, uh, more pedestrian movement in that whole quadrant. Uh, one of the concerns when we, we looked at this, uh, this is actually something that was recommended to us by city planning, in fact. And city engineering was involved with these decisions as well. But one of the things that was a concern was, was, uh, bus turning movement because there is a bus stop on that corner. And we did look at that to make sure that the new, new configuration would, would not, uh, be detrimental to the bus turns. I'll get to that in another sheet in a minute, but I just want to point that out. Uh, but that allows a lot more area, uh, in the, in the, in the actual intersection on that corner. Um, another thing that we have implemented into the plans is along Maxwell Street, we are, um, proposing, um, a raised, uh, stamped pavement, a pattern. Um, and it, and we are actually going to raise that pavement six inches so that Maxwell Street, the actual travel way of Maxwell Street will be at the will be at the same elevation as the sidewalk on either side. So as you're crossing Maxwell Street, as you're walking along Jersey Avenue, there's no down and back up. There's no handicap ramps there. It's actually, the pavement is flush at that. In order to implement that, because Maxwell Street slopes down towards Jersey Avenue, we did have to add some drainage to make sure we didn't trap any of the water. And I'll show that on another plan. But I wanted to point that out to you.
Mr. Chisvet, just for the record, was that upon the recommendation of the Jersey City engineers as well?
Yes, it was. And so another feature in the architect, when he gets into his testimony, he'll elaborate more. But we are proposing a raised restaurant deck, which actually encroaches into the public sidewalk area. As I said, it's a franchise agreement required for that. And that is shown on this plan. As you see, the words proposed restaurant deck. That is raised above sidewalk level. So it is at the floor level of the restaurant itself, which is several steps up from sidewalk. And there is a fairly large bike rental station, a docking station, that is already in that location. And because we're adding sidewalk area to the site, our only proposed change to that is we're just going to shift that a little bit to the right as you look at it on this plan, closer to Newark Avenue, so that there's at least five feet clear of that bike docking station between the restaurant deck and the docking station. And that's a pinch point right at that spot. So it's not like the whole sidewalk length is only five feet wide. It's just at that one little corner. And it's not much different than you would see in a lot of Jersey City sidewalks that are 10 feet wide and you have five-foot tree pits. It leaves you a remaining five feet. So it's, you know, it's a common, it's a common element. And like I said, that five-foot minimum is only at that one corner. I'm going to just discuss the trash and movement in and out of the site. It is a valet garage entrance and exit of that garage is on Maxwell Street. It's the only way in and out of there with vehicles. The idea, it is, as was testified earlier, it will be a valet arrangement. And the lobby is, the entry lobby for pedestrians is on Newark Avenue's side. So they would drop their car off. And we are showing along Newark Avenue, just before that bump out starts, we are proposing a drop-off area. And they would exit their cars, valets would pick it up, drive it around Maxwell Street and enter into the garage. Some of the garage parking is on mechanical, two-level lifts, and some of it is below grade in a mechanized system. It's a combination, but it's a total of 36 parking spaces in all. And that would all be handled by the valet staff. So the general public would not be driving around through Maxwell Street and bringing their car into the garage themselves. That's also the area where trash pickup would take place. And we did look at making sure that a trash truck could make the turn, actually be able to turn in off of Maxwell Street into the garage. And the trash would be stored inside that garage. You would be able to load that truck and then that truck would back out onto Maxwell Street to take off. So while it's loading, it would not be blocking traffic on Maxwell Street.
And Mr. Chisvet, that will be a private trash hauler, correct?
That's my understanding, yes. So it does say that the trash path is the curbside. And I apologize for that. Should have been removed from this plan because it's no longer being done that way. It will be taking place inside the garage. We are proposing to maintain the street trees that are there, which is why one of the trees, as you see on Newark Avenue, is not curbside. It's five feet in because we are moving the curb out and we're leaving the tree and the tree pit. We're building a five-by-10 tree pit around the existing tree, so we don't have to remove that tree. There is parking along Newark Avenue now. And we are not removing any of that street parking. There are two metered spaces along the frontage of this property. They will remain. The drop-off zone is just beyond where those parkings, where the metered parking ends. So the drop-off zone does not take away any of the on-street parking from the general public. I'm going to move to the next plan. And I did mention this. And this is to show the turning movements. And at the intersection, you can see a B-40. That's a 40-foot bus. That's a typical Ashtoe turn template for 40-foot bus. And we show that that bus can make that turn even with the narrowing of the pavement and the reduction of the curb radius in that area. So there's no detrimental impact to the traffic flow by doing that. And it does assist in the pedestrians in that area. And then the other turning movement, as you can see, is a right turn-in movement, which would be identical to a back-out movement. Basically, it's the same exact travel path and swept path, moving in and backing out. And that's what Ashtoe calls an SU-30, which stands for single-unit 30-foot truck. So that's not a semi-trailer. We don't anticipate semi-trailers arriving at this height for deliveries. It is a 30-foot single. It's a little bit larger than a box truck like you might see a UPS truck, which are generally only about 25 feet. It's more consistent with a trash collection truck. So we are showing that that truck can go into this garage and come out again. So I'm going to move to the lighting plan. Lighting plan, we are showing a combination of some existing street lights that are to remain, one that's going to be relocated. As I said, we are bumping out the curb on Newark Avenue. So instead of having the street light set back six, seven feet from the curb, we're proposing to take that street light and move it closer to the curb. It does throw quite a bit of light behind it. That's the nature of that kind of pole. So we do have well more than the required 1.0-foot candles minimum throughout the sidewalk along all three sides of the site. We are supplementing the existing street lighting by adding a couple of additional poles that will match the ones that are there. And we are proposing wall-mounted fixtures along Maxwell Street so that we have the required foot candles on the Maxwell Street sidewalk area. The next plan I'm showing now is the grading drainage and utility plan. We are proposing to connect the roof runoff from this building and the sanitary discharge from this building to the existing manhole main on Newark Avenue. And we are proposing water service on the larger main that's on Jersey Avenue. Gas will also come off of Jersey Avenue. And we are showing some drainage along Maxwell Street. That's not any of the site drainage. That, like I said before, because we are raising the pavement along Maxwell Avenue, we had to do something so we didn't trap runoff at the beginning of where that raised pavement starts. So we're showing an inlet on either side of Maxwell Street and a pipe with a manhole line going into the existing storm system on Jersey Avenue, which is where that water goes now. Now it just flows down the gutters and goes into the street and into catch basin on that street. The rest of the plans are details, which I don't think you're probably interested in that. Like I said, a lot of this work was done, a lot of the site improvements was done in conversation with Jersey City Engineering. We have not received a written letter in response to these plans, although we did send them a set of plans back in July, personally delivered a hard set to them in addition to what gets uploaded on the site. But we have not, to my knowledge, we haven't received any letter from them.
We did, for the record, we did receive one letter dated August 5, 2024 from the traffic engineers. And I believe you've addressed all that in your testimony. But just for the record, you would agree with their conditions and comments in their letters. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
That's all, right?
That's all I have unless you have some questions.
We'll hold those to the end.
Okay, then my next witness is going to be my architect, Jose Carballo.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, anything about the truth?
I do.
And if you could state your full name for the record?
Absolutely. Jose Carballo, J-O-S-E. Last name, C-A-R-B-S-M-B-Y-A-L-L-O. You're welcome.
Mr. Carballo, for the record, you are a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And I know Mr. Carballo has appeared before this board.
We accept his expertise, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. We're still trying to set up a little bit here.
Where's our tech help? Where did Francisco go?
No, that one here. See all that? No, no, no. That whole group there.
You're the young guy, come on. Yeah, that's him.
We've got too many wires.
For a hot second.
It was just warming up. Oh, there you go.
Okay, Mr. Carballo, now that we're all set up, if you could walk through the plans for the benefit of the board.
Can you just make sure that mic is on? It should, yeah, Chuck knows. You just have to tap where it says push.
Hello?
It's not on that screen. It's not on back here.
Can you guys see it now?
Okay, we're ready to go.
Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, good evening. Jose Carballo, I'm the architect for the project. And I'm very happy to be here tonight presenting our project to you. Mr. Cortella gave you a tremendous flavor of this project that we're presenting tonight. I think that, and his, excuse me, and his heart has created this project that is like no other project that honestly I haven't worked on. It's got so many different amenities, so many different parts to it, that it just makes it a very, very tremendous project. What you see here is the cover sheet. And the cover sheet actually shows, firstly, that I want to get into is the rendering of the building. You see what the building looks like. We are using the Capital One Building, which is, while not historic, is historically significant. And that's something that we worked on with HPC, you know, Maggie O'Neil. And we will keep working with her to get to the point where this building is an iconic building, as I think Mr. Harrington said, is a signature building, but also that it becomes a historically significant building. So you can see from that, the building that we've designed steps back from the facade of the building to allow the building to maintain its composition, its volume, and to maintain itself. I mean, this is what the building looks like. We're not touching it. We're doing very few things to it. You start seeing on that rendering the dining deck that we're extending the building to. This is done so that we can have a little bit more life on the street so that the restaurant actually comes out to the street. And you can see that there is a restaurant. One of the things in discussing with Ms. Neal are the windows, the round-up windows that we have mainly on Jersey Street, Jersey Avenue, sorry. And in pulling that deck out, we were actually spanning all five of them. And discussing with her, we decided that the best thing to do was to leave at least one of the windows showing the way that it was so that we have a historical reference to what, you know, was there before. The other windows are minimally being, are minimally being modified. And this is basically to allow traffic from inside the building to the deck on the outside. Wait, 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 wait. Go back, go back. The upper right-hand corner, you see two photos of the building. And you can see how the building basically reflects what we've done on the rendering. Again, the only change that we have is that it's the deck that's coming outside. And if you see over the entrance door, again, you know, Mr. Cortella has spoken about the art inclusion in this project. And we have a sort of like a shroud over that entrance. And this is something that, again, we discussed and we revised, you know, we changed as we went through HPC. And that it's going to be designed and built by a local artist. So that's a lot of what we have in here today is the local aspect of the project and the connection to, you know, to the local community. The lower left-hand corner, you see the site. You see the streets. You see Newark Avenue, Jersey. And then you see, I always forget what the number of that third street is.
Maxwell?
Maxwell, sorry. And Maxwell.
Maxwell's manager?
Maxwell's. And Maxwell. So you see that we have three frontages. So it's a very significant corner. And, you know, I'll let the plan of this go solo that. I just wanted to bring it up. As an architect and as a designer of the project, those three corners were very, or those three streets were very instrumental as to how we do and how we dealt with the building. In other words, this building has three fronts that are very important, that are fronting the street. So we're not doing Newark and Jersey and forgetting about, you know, Maxwell. We're including Maxwell in the design intent of the building. Going back to the rendering a little bit, you're going to see that it has some fins on the outside. And, you know, we'll talk about that later when we see the elevations. But these fins were done to, again, just give it an iconic look. Just give it a little bit more dynamism so that the building, you know, as, again, as I keep going back to previous testimony, as Chuck Harrington explained, this would be the terminus to that plaza. And it will also become a beacon where, you know, this is, now we know where we are. And if we're going somewhere, we know that we can always get to this point by just looking at the building. So that's one thing that I wanted to bring up. On the lower right-hand corner, you see a, it's a site plan of what the building is all about. You can see that it has a U shape. And one of the things that Mr. Cortella was discussing before is that we had a whole bunch of reiterations on this project. There were changes. There were decisions that were made that were based on communication and meetings with neighbors and community groups. So you see the dark portion of the building. That is the tall portion of the building. And that is basically facing north and east so that the lighter portion towards the left, which is, that was the leg of the U, as it, you know, used to be a U, that portion of it has been peeled off and removed so that it's a lower part of the building to allow more light towards the neighbors in the back. Okay. Okay, go ahead. This drawing was done so that we could show the demolition of the, what's going on with the building. You know, obviously, even in a historical building, there's some demolition that needs to be done, but the demolition here is basically and mostly on the inside of the building. The, those four windows that I talked about, the bottom part of the windows, will be removed, and doors will be included there so that we can go outside, so that will be, that's part of the demolition. I think the biggest part of demolition is in the lower right hand corner, where we're going to have a stair that actually connects first floor to the, to the mezzanine and to the art floor, the art exhibit floor, which is just above that. So that's, that's the only portion that we're removing. All of the, all of the, the coffered, the coffered work that the ceiling has, the coffered, C-O-F-F-E-R, work that the ceiling has will be maintained. We show a chandelier to be demolished, and that chandelier is going to be relocated, not demolished. Those are historicals or have historical significance, so whatever we say from here, we're gonna, we're gonna use with the building, or within the building. This next drawing is, no, the previous one. The other, yeah. Okay, so this drawing shows the site, it shows what we're doing with the building, and it shows all the green areas that the roof is going to have. I guess the engineer in, you know, detail will get into this, or has gotten into it, but we're trying to maintain most of the water runoff within the building, and this is what the, the green roofs will actually strive to do. And you can see the L shape of the taller part of the window, and that green area on the left side, that is the lower area of the project. So now we get into the floor plans. I like to start with the ground level, which is the center drawing on the upper. Okay, which is the center drawing on the upper row of drawings, and, you know, it's ground level side, ground level side plan. So you can see the shape of the bank, that is that rectangle that's towards the bottom of the drawing closer to Jersey Avenue. Again, that, it's going to remain intact, yes, some work is going to be done to the inside, but the walls on the outside, the exterior of the building is going to remain basically as is. That's going to become a restaurant. It has a mezzanine, and that mezzanine is going to become part of the restaurant as well, and that, you know, we'll get into, into the next drawing. Towards the back of the existing building, I think the engineer went through how we're going to remove the trash, we have the trash containers inside the building now, as opposed to what we had previously, and you're going to see four rectangles between the stair and, between the two stairs. Those are stackable parking spaces. Those are two stack, top and bottom, so that you have eight parking spaces there. Again, there's going to be valet personnel who will take care of all this parking, and, you know, several of the movements that will be happening within that, that space. You also see, towards the top of the drawing, you see a handicap space. This is mostly in case there's obviously a handicapped person that has a high van that needs to be parked somewhere, so this is where that's going to go. Right next to it, you see what's called a turntable, and that is where you now have, it's almost like an elevator that goes down into the basement, and if you go to the drawing on the left hand side, you're going to see the parking that is in the basement, and this is robotic parking. Nobody goes there. One stair goes down, and that's mainly for servicing in case, you know, anything happens, but there are no humans that need to go there to mobilize those cars. So the, and that shows the back of the building. Front of, front of the drawing is the existing building. So this is the lower level of the building, and it's accessed through the entrance stair that, if you go to back, again, back to the ground level side plan, we're leaving that round entrance, if you sink to it, it's almost like, we mentioned Maxwell Smart, it's like, almost like that, it actually slides close. It's really a very interesting way to get into the building. So you go into it, and there's a stair that actually goes up to either the restaurant or down into that lower level, and the lower level is where you have the kitchen, which services the restaurant as well as a hotel. It also has what we showed here as assembly space, and that's the, that's the teaching area that Mr. Cortella was talking about. So the education aspect of, you know, the cuisine, the, however you say it, I'm not sure, that's, that's going to be happening here, okay? And you're going to have students there, again, seeing chefs cook, being taught by chefs, and actually cooking, doing their trade. You go to the right hand of the sheet of the drawing, up on the upper right hand corner, and again, you're going to see the top of the building, the existing building, that's the second floor of the building, that's where the mezzanine is. Again, the mezzanine is going to be, it's going to be part of the restaurant, there's a whole bunch of rooms that are going to be removed so that we can open it up, and, you know, people will be able to sit there and look down into the restaurant. You see now the round stair, the circular stair, that's going to go through a couple of different floors, so it's going to go from the restaurant to the mezzanine, and then we'll get into the fourth floor, which is the top of the hotel, I'm sorry, is the top of the existing building. So towards the back of the mezzanine, I'm sorry, I'm still in the second floor mezzanine area, the upper right hand corner, you're going to see the art gallery, and that's where Mr. Cortella was talking about, you know, installations and a permanent collection, and who knows, I might even be part of, you know, work from, you know, work away from home, right? So you could be working in this area, and, you know, if you go and zoom, your backdrop is going to be, you know, a famous painting, or an art, a work of art. So this is, this, this now becomes a very dynamic space that's, that can be used for several different applications and activities. Okay, so how do, how do people get into this building? So I think the engineer, and let's go back to the center floor plan. So the engineer discussed that there's a drop off area in the front of the building, and that's a drop off or a pickup area. That'll be controlled by valet. If you're going to the hotel, you drop off your car there, there's probably a camera that's looking at you parking there, valet comes out, tells you where to go, you get your car, they get your car, and they go back into the parking area. So you go into the entry lobby, which we're calling an arrival lobby, that's the minor lobby, and that allows a couple of things. One of them is allows the accessibility to the restaurant. The, the two elevators have front and back doors, so that you can mitigate or, you know, negotiate between the two different levels that we have at this, that floor. But it also takes you up to the main lobby, which is on top of the existing building. Okay? So, let's see, where are we going now? So, so let's go to the third floor, okay, which is the lower left hand corner. And what you have there is what Mr. Cortella was talking about, recording podcast. I mean, you have those rooms in there where local artists or local podcasters, I guess you call them that, will be able to do their trade there, and if they want to, they could exercise in the pellet room, which is right next to it. So this is a floor that has a couple of different uses. Administration is there as well, so that it's close to the hotel floors, as well as to the restaurant, so it's a very strategic space. And we go to the fourth floor, and that's the floor where we're now on top of the, we're on top of the main building, the existing building. If you look at the section that we have in the center, you're going to see how the existing building, which is that two story level or space that you have there, it shows the main floor, it shows the mezzanine, and then right above that, that is your main lobby. And what's, what's exciting about this lobby is that you'll have not only a view of New York City, but you have a view of that, that pedestrian plaza right in front of it. So there's a connection. If you get to the hotel as a guest, well, now you know where to go, right? Because now you're seeing all the activity on that street, so you're going to go there and, and hopefully spend money, but be part of the community, okay? So that, that's where we are. Now, we, at this floor, we start seeing the rooms, we also see the artists and residents that Mr. Cortella talked about. That person's going to be occupying that space, and that's right off of the main lobby. So perhaps, you know, if you're a guest, you'll be seeing that person doing his or her trade. So that, that's very exciting. Let's go to the next one. So now we get into the hotel floors, and if we go to the fifth floor, which is the upper left hand corner plan, you see that, you know, it's your typical double loaded corridor, it's got rooms on both sides. At this point, it's a U building, this is the low part of the, the entire building. And then you see, as you go towards the left and towards the back, you see a green space. So this is one of the modifications that we did when we first started discussing it with the neighbors. So what we did was to remove that portion of the building, so that you have a wider view corridor from, from the, the south, from the condominium behind us. So that, that was one of them. Now, the fifth floor is the only floor now that is, that's the full floor, because when you go to the sixth floor, which is the one right next to it, you can see that that whole leg disappears, and that becomes a green area. And that's part of, you know, what Mr. Cortella was talking about, you know, cultivating your, your herbs, your, you know, your vegetables, that, this is going to be part of it, and this is very, very exciting. I, I love this building. So anyway, then you go to the seventh floor, the seventh floor is a, again, just, just rooms or keys, as they call in the business, so that, that remains just that. Eighth floor. So when we go to the eighth floor, one of the things that we're going to see is that blue room in the back, okay? And that, and that blue space is a two story space, and that is for when there's entertainers maybe that come into, into town, or they're recording, and they want to have an opening, so they can do it here, okay? Now, if we go back to the previous plan, if you can, go, go to the first floor. So if you look at the, at the first floor, which is the plan on the, on the center of the sheet, you're going to see that there's a private lobby in the back. So I didn't miss it previously, I just wanted to discuss why we have that lobby. This lobby has an elevator that goes directly to that hospitality suite, and as, you know, an entertainer, you'll basically go in into that lobby, and you could just go to your floor without having anybody see you. So that, that's what, that's the entrance to, to that floor, to that hospitality suite. So we go to, go to the next floor again. So the hospitality suite actually has two levels. So the first level is on the eighth floor, and that has two bedrooms, it has a small wellness area, and it has a theater. And the theater, again, if you're an entertainer, you just recorded album, CD, whatever they call it nowadays, you could actually have your, you know, if you have a video, you could actually show your video in that theater. You could actually show a movie of how you were recording. So that's very, you know, very telling of what's going to be happening in this, in that hospitality suite. The next floor up, I'm sorry, and then you have a fitness area, and then you have a, some more rooms on that floor. The ninth, the ninth floor, which is the center of the drawing, again, has the second floor to that, to the hospitality suite, and you see that now you have a grand room, you have a bar, a grand room, you have a bar, you actually have a smoking room, okay? Like to smoke cigars. And then towards the back, there's an outdoor space with koi pond, and you're probably going to have a grill. With a koi, I'm sorry, I just keep moving away from, a koi, K-O-I, pond, a grill, so that you could actually go outside and, you know, just have some festivities. And again, you see the elevator that was on the first floor, it accesses both of those floors. So on the ninth floor as well, there's the rooftop bar, and as you can see, the rooftop bar is basically completely enclosed. It's definitely enclosed towards the back, towards the condominium project in the back, and it opens to the, again, it opens to New York City, it opens to that pedestrian plaza. So again, there's that connection from, you know, you're up there listening to jazz, listening to a pianist, listening to, you know, somebody playing the violin, that's, that's the kind of activity that we're contemplating. The roof plan, again, we go back to the green areas that we're talking about, the green roofs, so that we can collect some, some water, and it doesn't go into the system. And we also have a pool deck. The pool deck is actually the ninth floor, not, not the roof. So we have a pool deck that it, that it's open, and again, that pool deck is for the enjoyment of the guests in the, in the hotel. So we've seen the rendering, this is basically the elevation, and again, we'll, we'll keep talking to HPC regarding what other things we need to do. As an example, the, the existing windows are either copper or bronze, in color anyway, so we might pick that up a little bit, just to have that connection to the existing building. But as you can see, the balustrade that's on the roof, that remains open, we're not touching that. Obviously, we're repairing it, but we're not doing anything detrimental to it, or to the building itself. Here you can see the four round top windows that are being used to go out to the, to that dining deck, and you see the last window, or, you know, the first window, if you're looking at the entrance, that is, that will remain as is. That window's not going to be touched, other than perhaps being repaired. We also have, on those four windows that we're modifying, we also have canopies. And we'll show you a detail of what those canopies look like. So the next drawing, this is the Newark Avenue elevation. You can see, again, you can see the artwork that's going to go, you know, over the entrance, you can see now it's a green, it's a green wall. So again, part of the art installation is Mr. Cortella wants to do a green wall, that will not just be, you know, it'll be, it'll have some design to it, again, to continue the art motif that we're using throughout this building. You can see how, on the right hand of the building, the building matches the height of the condominium project behind us, and you can see how it steps back at that point, and that's the, the notch that I was talking about that we removed from the building. You see the entrance to the, what's going to be the restaurant to the left. You see the entrance to the, what's gonna be the restaurant to the left. More into the right, you see the entrance to the arrival lobby, as well as to the private lobby next to it. This is the Maxwell elevation, the Maxwell Street elevation, Maxwell Avenue elevation. You can see, again, the existing building. You can see how our building steps back to let that balustrade keep going. And you also see towards the back that we actually, in the latest renovation, we removed a lot of this building. We actually removed three floors of the building and this stair that used to be on that end, parallel to the condominium project behind us. And we moved all that out. This we did just to make sure that we had more light, as much light as possible. And again, you can see the design is just the same as the other, as the other elevations, the other sides of the building, so that we're not leaving any elevations behind. Okay? The next drawing shows four different renderings. And you can see four different views. You know, one of them, the one on the right, upper right hand, it's a street view. And it's probably either early in the morning or in the evening because it starts getting a little dark. But we just wanted to show you a different mood for this building. On the lower right-hand side, you can actually see how we peel the building back to maintain a wider view corridor for the condominium project behind us. The next drawing shows a view from the saffron. And it shows how the one wall stays up on the left and the other wall actually is lower. And, you know, one of the things that Mr. Cortella wants to do is is have a work of art on the walls. And maybe this is something that changes in time. But, you know, that's something that he wanted to see. The photo from the right-hand side, which includes the rendering of the Albion Hotel, it shows a progression of how it gets taller from the smaller buildings to the saffron to the Albion Hotel. So there's a progression of height going towards the corner. So we're still getting into some of the details, which would be building details and historical details. So on the left-hand side, just below where it says signage, you're seeing some of the types of plantings that we may do as part of that front wall. So that you can see that it's something that may change for the seasons. And it's something that is gonna be artistic. It's gonna be designed. It's actually just gonna be just thrown in there. You're seeing towards the center, you're seeing some of the glass panels that we're gonna use for, you know, for, what do you call it? Railings and walls at the exterior of the building. And, you know, you see the folding glass wall concept. And this is one of the things that we're contemplating for the lower portion of those round windows on Jersey Avenue. On the right-hand side, now we get into the awning details and the awning that we're, wanna include in this. And, you know, we found this photo that was like almost what we're doing. It's got the round windows. It's got the ceiling on the outside. And as you can see, on a nice day, you know, you have the awnings retracted on a very sunny day. Or if it starts raining a little bit, then the awning gets pulled out and you can still enjoy outdoor dining. It's a detail, the right-hand side is a detail of the awning for historic purposes. So historical comparison, as is and as we want it to be. So you're seeing the building as it is on the upper rendering. And you're seeing the building as we want it to be on the lower rendering. And what you see here is that those four windows will be modified. And the last window on the right will remain as-is. As a, you know, as a sign of what it was. This is what the windows looked like. Now with the, we have the conversion. Now this is what they look like. And we're planning on using the same type of railing that was there. We're just gonna pull it out to the front. So almost what we're doing is taking the bottom of the building and pulling it out. Nothing more than that. On the right-hand side, you see a photo of the building in close-up. And you see some of the, you know, some of what time has done to it, which is, you know, dirt. What time has done to it, which is basically dirt. And it has to be cleaned and repaired. Again, historical comparison on the next one. Again, the same thing. This is what we're gonna do to the building. You see on the upper right-hand corner that shroud that we wanna put on, over the entrance to the building. And, you know, we've gone through a couple of different changes as we go through HPC and we discussed it with Ms. O'Neil. Again, more historical comparisons. On the left, you see three drawings, three floor plans, which is the basement, the first floor of the bank, and the existing mezzanine. And on the right-hand side, you see what we're planning to do with it. And basically, you know, the building remains the same. Again, as I've expressed before, except for the dining deck and the round stair that goes through three stories. Could I take a five-minute break or have some more?
Yeah. I was gonna recommend, before we get into the shadow study, maybe take a break. Bridget's probably overdue on her break.
Sure. Five, 10 minutes, what would you prefer?
Well, it's eight-ten, eight-eleven right now. So you wanna say eight-twenty?
Eight-twenty.
Thank you.
Oh, eight-twenty-two. Mr. Harrington, we'd like to begin again. Where's Mr. Harrington? Oh, he's right here. Okay, when you're ready. Well, he can continue. I would say begin. Yes, he'll be right in.
Okay. So just kinda back on the record here, our next step here in the process is we completed an extensive shadow study in connection with the project. So Jose's gonna walk you through that.
Okay.
Sorry for taking the break. My mouth is just getting too dry. So the next stage of the presentation is a shadow study. And what we did is, we took every month, we took two hours of that month, one day, this particular day, and we did a comparative study of the existing building versus what we're proposing. Now, in between the two sets of months, you're gonna see what's called a key plan. And you're gonna see that the key plan is oriented north and south. That gives us the angle of the sun and the location in relationship to the sun. So I'll start with January 21st. And on the left-hand side, 21st, and on the left-hand side of the drawing up on top in the January column or row, you're gonna see, we took one study at 9:00 AM and another one at 10:00 AM. We just wanted to see how that one hour actually impacted the building behind us. So what you see on the left-hand side is the existing building, as it is now. That's the bank. And on the right-hand side, you see the, our building. And from the north-south axis, you can see how we've actually pushed most of the building towards the north-east part of the project so that the south portion of it will remain more open. But if you look at January 21st, existing, at 9:00 AM, you're gonna see that the court, or the courtyard, it's in shadows. It's in the shade. And when you look at our project, which is right next to it, proposed project, you're gonna see this is basically the same thing. We're really not increasing the shadows in the courtyard. We do, however, have some shadows on the roof of the building. But this is January 21st. This is when the angle of the sun is at its lowest. So the shadows that are cast are longest. If you go to 10:00 AM, you now start seeing how that, those shadows are receding. So you see on the existing one, the shadows are receding even in the courtyard. And then when you get to January 21st at 10:00 AM, you're gonna see the same thing with our building. Yes, we do cast a little bit more of a shadow, but now that's 10:00 AM. So by 12:00, we are right on axis with the, with the south and with the sun. So that whole area is in full sun. February, if we go down to the next row, you have February. And again, we start at 9:00 AM. And you can see how with the existing building, the courtyard is dark. And with the proposed building, again, the courtyard is still dark. And we're just casting some shadows on the roof of the project. Again, this is February, okay? Cold weather, long shadows. Angle of the sun is low. On the right-hand side now, at 10:00 AM, you're gonna see how the shadows are basically receding. And there's only a portion with the existing, with the proposed building, there's only a portion of that courtyard that is under shadow. Everything else is open. And the shadows on the roof are receding at this point. Again, you get to 12 o'clock, the sun is right on. You can, your, the only shadows that will be cast will be by your own building into the courtyard. The lower row, which is March, now you're seeing the angle of the sun start, you know, not being so low. And you're gonna see the existing building on 9:00 AM. It's still casting shadows on the, you know, on the courtyard. The proposed building is casting shadows on the courtyard as the building and just some shadows on the roof of the structures. Again, this is still March, right? At 10:00 AM, you can see how the shadows have receded. And that's because now the angle of the sun has started, starts being a little steeper so that you get more sun. The angle is higher, so you get more sun into the back. Again, you get to 12 o'clock, you got full sun on that, on the courtyard, as well as the roof. And the, so what's gonna happen is that the, I guess, the south building will cast shadows on the north building. Okay? And that happens in every scenario that we have. So you get to April. And again, you see the, at 9:00 AM, you see the shadows being cast. And you can see there's a little opening of light in the courtyard. You go to our building, the proposed building, and the shadows are not that bad anymore. So we only have a little bit of shadows, some partial shadows on the roofs of the, on the roofs of the existing saffron building. And you touch a little bit on the deck, not tremendously so. You go to 10:00 AM, and basically, if you look at it, the shadows are cast by our building, our proposed building, are not, have receded tremendously. So this is basically right where our building is. And the shadow that you see on the, this is April 21st at 10:00 AM, the shadow that you see on the south building, it's minimal. The shadow you see on the north building is receded tremendously as well. So as they're getting into May, and again, the existing building is still casting shadows on the courtyard. The proposed building is casting some shadows. Yes, it's minimally shading that area. If you go by 10:00 AM, those shadows have receded tremendously. And again, 11:00, 12:00, you have full sun going right into that courtyard. And we get into June. June is now, you know, the angle of the sun is high. You see the shadows even at 9:00 AM, they're minimal shadows. And then you get to the 10:00 AM, it's even less. Again, 11:00, 12:00, full sun on that project. On that building, actually. So July, now July, August, the sun is way up high. You know, but still, there's some shadows that are being cast by the existing building, some shadows that are being cast by the proposed building. You get to 10:00 AM, shadows are minimal. It's just basically close to our building. Close, very close to our building, adjacent to our building. You go to August 21st, which is the middle row. And again, you're still casting shadows on the courtyard. That you can get away from. The shadows are gonna be there. At 9:00 AM in August, you're gonna see some shadows. Now, in August, the sun actually starts going down again, the angle of the sun. So you start casting some longer shadows. I'm sorry. This is some shadows. Now, this is August. And in August, the angle of the sun starts going down a little bit more. So you're getting longer shadows. And, you know, you can see at 9:00 AM, the shadows that we have. And then at 10:00 AM, basically, the shadows are somewhat minimal. But, you know, you start seeing more shadow now. September 21st, you're seeing, again, same thing. The courtyard is in shadow, it's in the shade. But now the angle of the sun is lower. So the shadows on September 21st at 9:00 AM, they become a little longer. But still, you're, it's just the roof that's being shaded at this point. And then you go to September 21st at 10:00 AM, and you can see how the shadows have receded. Not as much as, you know, August and July, but they have receded somewhat. Again, in all of these, once you get to 11:00, 12:00, you have full sun. You're facing south completely. And that was the purpose of removing that one leg or, you know, diminishing that one leg just so that we, we were allowed more sun to go into, to be experienced by our neighbors. You get into October, again, you're getting October, November, December. You're starting to see the shadows being longer between 9:00 and 10:00. But you see the difference between 9:00 and 10:00 in October, November, and December. Even when you go December 21st at 10:00 AM, the shadows are not that great. The shadows are basically staying. The farthest that they will go is probably to the edge of the rooftop deck on the north building. Now, all these shadow studies were done by Revit. And Revit has an application that does this. So what we need to do is basically locate the building on the north-south axis. And the program actually generates all the shadow studies. As a point of reference.
Thank you.
This, if we could mark this as A3, I think we're up to. This is a shadow program, if you will.
It's paused.
So this is a motion or a, almost like a film of a shadow study going through the entire our site and part of the neighborhood that actually shows on an hourly basis what the shadows do. And once you get to like 12 o'clock, noon time, just stop it or move it back to it. it. And you can see, and when is this, when did you, this is what, December? So so you can see that by the time you get to twelve o'clock, you have full sun. And if you look at the the courtyard of the of the saffron, you're gonna see that, I guess, that's the south wall of the north building is partly shadowed by the south building. And that's always gonna happen, because the sun, the the building was laid out east-west, so as you see, as you, you know, you're facing the sun and the south, that's gonna create a shadow.
And when you say south building, you mean the the south building of the saffron building?
The saffron, correct, correct. Yeah, the building has the two wings, as you say, wings, not buildings, it have two wings, one on Newark Avenue and the other one on Maxwell, and maybe I should have named it like that, but the Maxwell Building is actually, Maxwell Wing is actually casting shadows on the Newark wing of the project. And and that happens in every situation that that we've done and every study that we've done. But, you know, you can see at this point that the shadow that's being cast is basically just their own shadow. And this is at twelve, go back to eleven, let's see what happens. Sorry, eleven? So so this is eleven, again, you still have the same situation where you have full sun, but the sun is actually, the building is actually casting a shadow on on itself.
Okay, that's that's all we have for Mr. Carballo.
Mm-hmm. Who's your next witness?
Our next witness is Matt Sekler. Matt is going to testify as our traffic engineer and and our planner, so he's gonna speak to the traffic first. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Yes, I do. My name is Matthew Sekler, that's S E C K L E R. I'm with Stonefield Engineering Design, address is ninety-two Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey.
Mr. Sekler, could you give the board the benefit of your professional educational experience with regard to engineering and and your planning qualifications?
Certainly, I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Union College in Schenectady, New York, I have a Master's in City Regional Planning from Rutgers University, the Blaustein School. I have a licensed, I'm a licensed professional engineer and professional planner in the state. I'm also recognized professional traffic operations engineer by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which requires both an examination and experience. Been practicing the field of planning and traffic engineering for over fifteen years, been accepted before over a hundred fifty boards in the state of New Jersey.
We'll accept this qualification, yes, thank you. Thank you.
So before you begin, Matt, I I know we have something on the screen here, is it one or two slides that we want to mark as A four, or do we want to mark them separately?
I guess we could mark them both A four. It's one of two and two of two, they're both aerial photographs prepared by my office. The date prepared is October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Essentially, it's a zoomed-out version of the general area and a little more zoomed-in version, which is two of two. So I'd be happy to refer to which sheet for the record.
Thank you. So Matt, let's let's talk about the the traffic first, before you get into the planning testimony, if you could give us the benefit of your review of the site and any traffic implications.
Absolutely. As part of this project, we did prepare a traffic and parking impact letter report. It is dated November tenth, twenty twenty-three. I'll briefly go into the analysis, as again, this is a requirement in filing a site plan application with the board. However, I will highlight what I think is, you know, some of the more important transportation and traffic aspects that really go beyond just calculations and numbers, especially when you're dealing with urban infill sites such as this one here. As part of this project, we did do traffic counts at the intersection of of Jersey and and Newark in order to understand what the peak hour traffic is like in this area. It was done June sixth and June seventh of two thousand twenty-three, that was a Tuesday and a Wednesday, from seven in the morning to nine in the morning, and four PM to seven PM, getting your typical morning and evening rush hours. Again, no surprise to anyone who's walked, driven, biked through this area, it is a congested area. Obviously, you know, the city has created the pedestrian corridor down Newark, and this is basically the terminus of that point, so you do have, you know, kind of a a whole group of transportation activity happening at once here. You have pedestrians crossing the street, you have city bike on the corner, you have buses here, and again, the traffic patterns have changed, you know, over the last five, ten years, where no longer is Newark a through street, and traffic is still working themselves around. So, you know, clearly from our site observations, our traffic observations, this is a congested corridor, but clearly, it does serve not just the vehicles, which is what people tend to think of congestion, but also serves a lot of pedestrians, a lot of bikes and other forms of transportation, which is, I think, a benefit to this site's location. In addition to doing those counts, we also perform trip generation analysis, basically looking at how much traffic our site will generate in terms of vehicular traffic. Now, this is based on formulas published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Of course, those formulas can't uniquely identify the transportation options that we have here. Obviously, when I go to that book and I say, how much traffic does a hotel generate? How much does a, you know, a podcasting studio generate? It doesn't appreciate the fact that this is a location that's a five-minute walk to the path, again, you got buses nearby, you're in this mixed-use area where there's a lot of people walking and driving. So in our analysis, we utilize the book numbers, but I would caution to say that those are likely overestimating what you would expect for this type of development in this type of location. You did hear from the applicant earlier, you know, speaking about kind of hotel traffic in terms of parking, how many cars would potentially be parked on a site in a given day? I think that is a good data point, I think he said about seven parked cars, you know, a a day, you know, potentially from the site. I would just say, from a traffic perspective, you may end up having a little more than that just because of kind of Ubers that wouldn't be parking on site, but maybe coming to drop off, not really entering the property, but using that drop-off area that we have on Newark, and then leaving. So you still may generate a vehicular trip, but it may not lead to a car parked in the garage. And again, we did that analysis and found that with this development, there really isn't a significant change in levels of service delay at the nearby intersection, you know, right at the Newark Avenue and Jersey Avenue intersection. But I do want to speak to a little outside of those kind of calculations that were required to do as part of traffic analysis and submitting this report, and talk to and in submitting this report, there are a whole host of other aspects of transportation that are being advanced as part of this project. You saw on the site plan that was previously shown by the site engineer, the bump out that we're creating at the corner of Jersey Avenue and Newark Avenue, which is a huge benefit from from a pedestrian standpoint. Again, it reduces the crossing distance for pedestrians that are looking to cross the street, either Jersey Avenue or Newark Avenue, and again, this is a high pedestrian area because of the fact the pedestrian corridor starts immediately to the east of the site. In addition, it helps slow down right-turning vehicles, which again, which is one of the most common accidents you may see in a urban environment, is a vehicle making a right turn, not seeing a pedestrian cross the street, so it slows down that movement, besides reducing the distance that a pedestrian's in the street. It also provides more waiting area, these corners can get congested. This is again, an area, especially in, when we did our counts in June, nice weather, a lot of pedestrians out there, gives them a little more area to basically wait on the sidewalk, so they're not kind of spilling out into the street. So I do think that's a clear transportation benefit that this site brings. You heard also how the site is, as part of this application, changing the grade of Maxwell Street. Again, Maxwell Street kind of functions as a back alley, an access alley, to a number of these buildings that have either reverse frontage or or front frontage on Maxwell Street. What that will do is that creates Maxwell Street, almost puts the car second, the pedestrians first. Basically, pedestrians no longer are gonna be going down a little handicap ramp, walking across a painted crosswalk, and coming back up again. Basically, the vehicular vehicles are gonna be traveling at the pedestrian level, which is basically at the sidewalk level, which will be basically flush across. So it is an improvement from a pedestrian standpoint, helps again, slow down vehicles that are using Maxwell, which again, is a benefit from a transportation point of view. And lastly, again, you heard about the city bike that's located along our frontage, and the bus that's located along our frontage, again, those will remain, and they are useful enterprises either for employees of the building, guests of the building, or potential, you know, people that may be using the restaurant, having city bike, having a bus nearby is really important to help reduce that car traffic. Again, we're trying to promote, especially as a city, with the kind of Vision Zero initiative, trying to promote these other forms of transportation. I think that this is a site that's ideally located to take advantage of that from a transportation point of view. Again, other aspects of the transportation review of the site, obviously, you heard from the site engineer, in terms of the access management, in terms of how the loading and unloading will occur. I will note that, you know, there is some street loading that currently occurs for the businesses along Newark Avenue. I think today I even saw a Pat LaFrida truck, you know, parked there, probably hand-delivering some items down the pedestrian corridor. And talking to the applicant, it's very likely that those purveyors are the same ones that he may be using, so it's not necessarily even bringing new deliveries to the area, it's just, instead of someone wheeling stuff to the Newark Street corridor, they may also do a drop-off at this site as well. So again, it's important to note that this site will not have a significant significant negative impact from a transportation or traffic point of view, and I think there are a number of aspects that we've been working with city staff, engineering staff, and planning staff, to improve things from a transportation point of view. So I do think that this site, again, is advancing, you know, a lot of the transportation goals and will not create a negative impact.
So does that conclude your testimony regarding the traffic implications?
Yes.
So, yeah, we're moving to the, right into the planning testimony, and I just want to preface it that, you know, have you reviewed the neighborhood in the downtown area as as part of your review and testimony thing?
Yes, I have visited the site physically, I've also reviewed assorted planning documents related to the nearby area, as well as the zoning ordinance and zoning code. I've also reviewed the plans prepared and the correspondence back and forth with the city and the city's professional staff.
Okay, and could you give us the benefit of your testimony based upon your review of the 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 neighborhood in the downtown area and your your planning expertise?
Absolutely. And and again, just kind of bringing back and and looking at this site, you know, a little bit more from what's been out there and what's out there today. I believe the bank building itself probably dates to almost a hundred years old, I believe it was built in the nineteen twenties, the bank building itself. I believe in looking at old aerial aerial photographs, in the nineteen, either late nineteen sixties or early nineteen seventies, the buildings adjacent to it, which is now the current parking lot, were taken down and basically a parking lot was added. And then in the late nineties or early two thousands, a little drive-through canopy was added at that point. So kind of just bring you the history of what was there, what we're looking to maintain is obviously the look of that bank building itself, that was, you know, about a hundred years old. But the aspects of the site that came later, the, you know, nineteen sixty-seventies parking lot, two thousands or nineteen nineties drive-through, we're taking that out, and I think that is consistent with what the goals and the kind of the vision is for the Newark Avenue corridor and the zone that we're in. In fact, when I looked at the area from the on Newark Avenue from Grove Street, all the way up to Fourth Street, which I think is about a half-mile distance, I believe this is the only curb cut that is left that can serve traffic. I think the Bank of America on the pedestrian street has a curb cut, but you can't use it because it's on a pedestrian street, but this is the only curb cut that is left along the entire corridor for any any private property. So again, clearly, over time, and kind of, you know, following kind of the the goals of plant planning, these kind of curb cuts or vacant sites have been removed, and they've been filled in, basically, filling in almost like a missing tooth along this corridor to help create a better atmosphere, better planning design from both the pedestrian standpoint, but also from a neighborhood standpoint, in taking out these kind of curb cuts and uses that are no longer permitted. A drive-through bank is no longer permitted in the zone based on the current zoning, and again, clearly, our application is taking that out as part of this application. Now, this site is located in the NC one zone, which is a neighborhood commercial zone. This is when you're kind of coming up from Newark Avenue, and I'll kind of point out the various zones on the map that I have here before you. And again, this is A four, I believe, in sheet two of two. We are in the NC one zone, we are actually the first property on the south side of Newark Avenue in the NC one zone. The NC one zone does run along the north side of Newark Avenue, generally from the area near the path as you come up towards the site, but we are the first one on the south side. The other zoning districts nearest to us is across Jersey Avenue, is the Jersey City Downtown Redevelopment Area. And again, that is generally that triangle that is between Jersey Avenue, Newark Avenue, and Columbus. That does allow, just for an idea of intensity or development, does allow for buildings that can be eight stories, and a lot of areas that can be six stories plus a penthouse. I would note that I believe that there is a building at five thirty-two Jersey Avenue, which again, is in that district, it kind of fronts along Jersey Avenue and Columbus, that is, I believe, about eighty-three point three feet, about eight stories high. And again, that is in that zoning district that is immediately to our east, which is the Jersey City Downtown Redevelopment Area. Again, as I mentioned, we start the NC one zone on the south side, the NC one zone is also along the north side of Newark Avenue. If you kind of go diagonally across Maxwell Street, that is the R three district, and again, that's looking at A four, it's kind of the last properties on the left-hand side along Maxwell Street, and would extend to Coles, that's the R three district, that's a zone that if you have over six thousand square feet lot, you could actually build eight stories high in that location as well. We are in the NC one zone, but I just want to kind of highlight kind of what our neighboring zones are, kind of across the street from us and next to us as well. The NC one zone does have a purpose, that it looks to enhance and improve existing neighborhood business districts, it looks to provide ground floor retail in mixed-use buildings and promote walkability, and I think that the use that you've heard does advance all of those items. I do want to note that the NC one zone has a minimum lot area of two thousand five hundred square feet. In fact, many of the lots in the zone are these kind of small lots, it's very familiar if you walk up Newark Avenue, which again, the north side is primarily NC one zone, continue down there, it's a lot of small lots that have maybe a ground floor retail and something upstairs, whether it's additional commercial uses or residential uses, but very small and narrow lots. In fact, we looked at a total of seventy-eight lots from Grove to Coles that were in the NC one zone. There are seventy-eight lots along that stretch, you know, on on both sides of the NC one zone, and the median lot was two thousand four hundred square feet. We are over thirteen thousand square feet. In fact, we are the second-largest lot out of those seventy-eight lots, or seventy-eight properties in that corridor. So Safron's actually the largest lot, the one next to us, we are the second-largest lot at thirteen thousand fifty-six square feet, where the median lot is twenty-four hundred square feet. And that's gonna come into consideration later when we talk about this site suitability and what makes this site unique and can support both the height that we're asking Both the height that we're asking for, which is a D six variance. And the use that we're asking for, which is the hotel, which is not permitted use in the zone. And really, a lot of it comes down to that aspect of of lot size and lot location. Again, we are that first property coming off the pedestrian street. We are at an influx or an area with multiple zones and levels of intensity. And it is an area that we become a focal point at the termini of that Newark Avenue corridor. So when you're looking down the corridor, this is a point that could help bring people to the end of that street. I do want to talk about, you know, from a D one perspective, the hotel is is not listed as a permitted use in this zone. It is listed. Excuse me, as a permitted use in the NC three zone. We're in the NC one zone. The NC three zone has a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. So the NC three zone, again, neighborhood commercial zone. Is designed with the idea that their lots are 10,000 square feet. In fact, 100 foot minimum width, 100 foot minimum depth that we actually fit. We have a lot that is more aligned with a 10,000 square foot zoning requirement. Then where we are, which is a 2,500 square foot zoning requirement. So when you look at the uses that are permitted. In the NC one zone and the NC three zone, a lot of them line up. Retail's permitted in both, offices are permitted in both. Restaurants type one and two are permitted in both, theaters are permitted in both. But there are some uses like hotel, which is only permitted in the NC, only permitted between those two in the NC three zone. I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that the NC three zone, it, the mindset of it is for lots that are 10,000 square feet or more. Again, all of those uses in the NC one zone, they were designed with the idea or permitted based on the idea of the average lot is only 2,500 square feet. I can't imagine putting a hotel on, I would say, our median lot, which is that 2,400 square foot lot. It that doesn't fit. In fact, looking at hotels that kind of exist in Jersey City today, you look at. I believe the Holiday Inn coming out of the Holland Tunnel, you look at. The. Have a list here, hold on. Coming at the one of the Holland Tunnel, I believe it's the the Ramada by Wyndham. I believe there is also the Hyatt Place. All of those range in terms of their lot size between point three and point four acres. And we are at point three acres. So again, we have a lot that I think is consistent with what a hotel could be supported on. But our zone, because it's designed for these very, very small lots, doesn't allow it. So when we look to and we'll look to later on, we go through these statutory requirements for this D one use variance. I think it's important to highlight and note that our lot is very oversized. Again, clearly the second largest lot in this corridor. And where this use is permitted, we actually tend to fit the bulk requirements. We are 100 foot wide, 100 foot deep or greater than 10, greater than 10,000 square feet. So again, this kind of lines up the fact that I believe this site is uniquely suited for this type of use. From just a, the size perspective and it's unique in that case. There are not many other lots that you could point to where it would be suitable in this zone. I also think it is suitable in this zone because of its physical location, again, being at the endpoint of the Newark Avenue pedestrian corridor. And I think it's important when you look at. Goals and purposes of master planning of the master plan, the idea is for. This type of use and these type of downtown nodes. To encourage certain levels of density to get people and businesses to basically be successful. You want to have these these people. On the street to allow these businesses to be successful, especially on these, you know, areas further from the path, but still on the pedestrian street. You heard from the applicant and I think it's, it's clear, you know, when people are staying at a hotel. They're not cooking dinner in their house. They're going out to dinner. They may be going out to see an artist. They may be going out in the town. When you add a a hotel, and again, I think he spoke to boutique hotels. It's adding people to this area that will help invest and will help, you know, contribute from, you know, from a. Financial standpoint to all the various businesses along this area. And also helps bring about a variety of businesses to this area. Besides the fact that we are adding this restaurant into an adaptively reused. I would say, I'm going to say historic bank, but a bank that is, you know, almost about 100 years old. So I do see this being an important focal point. And typically, when you have, I would say focal point buildings, again, you want them at the end of a street. Jersey City has. A wonderfully designed street grid, not from a transportation perspective, it's actually terrible for car traffic. But from a visual perspective, when you have these intersecting streets, these triangular meeting points, it allows you to add architecture, add interest. And I think when you saw from the building itself, the building adds interest to the end of this corridor. And I think will help bring and promote and benefit. Not just the NC one zone that we are kind of the first property in on the southbound side. But also the Jersey City Downtown Redevelopment Area that is right next to us. And I think kind of. It works well for us being on that kind of transition of that those two zones, I think is a really important factor for why and how. This property is uniquely and and suited for this type of use. Now. I also want to discuss. The D six variances, and then I'll go into kind of the positive and negative criteria, because I kind of want to combine the two, because I think. The use and the height really go together with that this application. So I want to now discuss the height a little bit as it relates to to this application. Now, as it relates to height variances, that is a D six variance. The statutory criteria is not necessarily as strict as the D one use variance criteria. We do need to however show. That this site can support. The additional height without creating negative impacts. Can we support this height here? And I think what you heard from the architect and and hopefully from the applicant in terms of the iterations that they went through in designing this building. Is that they really kind of tried to push and pull this building in different ways to try to minimize the impact as much as they could. And I I do want to discuss, you know, that type of exercise that was kind of undergone here. Because it's important to know that while we are proposing a nine story building, it's not nine stories consistent throughout. It's nine stories on about 40% of the lot has nine stories. I believe 62% of the lot has six to eight stories. And then you go to the fifth story and you're at 79%. And actually, the fourth story is even less. It's at 42% of the lot, sorry, 72% of the lot. So the idea is that they were not kind of throwing as much volume as possible in one location. They're trying to kind of work and mold this building to create the most minimum impact as possible. And I think that is seen in terms of the actual gross square footage of the building itself. This, this lot can support with the with the setbacks that are required, the rear yard setback that's required here. A gross square foot of about 76,000 square feet if it was a six story building. And again, we're in a five story zone, but I just want to say if we were six stories. 76,000 square feet is how much area you could have in your building. Five stories is about 63,000 square feet. If we took out the parking garage, because this application does not actually require any parking. We are exempt from needing parking because we are adaptively reusing the building that's out there. But I think from a neighbor perspective, I think it's important to have valet parking just because that keeps cars off the street, gives them a place to go. And has loading inside there. But if we take out that kind of volume in the building. That kind of clay volume we have left would basically be right around that five to between that five and six story volume that is permitted by ordinance. But we are taking that piece of clay instead of just having a rectangular block that's five or six stories. We're pulling up areas, we're pushing in areas, we're pulling out areas and basically redesigning that. Volume into the building that you saw out there today. So in terms of intensity, in terms of the amount of interior. Like development, it's very similar to a five or six story building on this property. It's just been moved around from where that volume is. And when you're dealing with this height variance, we need to show that there's no substantial negative impact. Clearly, there can be an impact, but the question is, is it substantial and is it substantially negative? And you saw from the shadow study and there were so many images up there. So I guess the the takeaway from it is that. For a few of the winter months, it seems to be potentially for portions of an hour of the winter months. There may be more of a shadow than an as of right development. And that is basically what we're looking at in terms of, is there substantially a negative impact? Because we've designed the building, we've angled the building, so we would not have that negative impact from a shadow point of view. And when you're reconciling the D six variance, one of the aspects that we have to look at. Is we need to think of why there was a height restriction in the first place. And again, there are properties right next to us that can go eight stories, you know. In the zone we're in, we could only go, we could only go five stories at 65 feet. But right around us, you could go eight stories. So they could create their own shadows near us, maybe on nearby properties. But the question is, you know, do we. Is the shadow is the, what is the purpose of that height variance? I think shadowing is one of the aspects that they were clearly concerned about, and that's why your ordinance even requires a shadow study. You know, so those two clearly go hand in hand. When you have a height variance or a height issue, show us the shadow study. So that was clearly one aspect. Another aspect of a height variance is usually intensity. Are you putting way too much on a property? And I think we're looking at here. Is I don't think we're putting too much square footage. We're just moving it around on the property. Again, pulling some areas up, some areas down and some areas off the property line. So I don't think that we're creating too much intensity from a volume perspective. The other aspect we typically look at from any type of. D five or D six variance is usually traffic. Are we generating too much traffic that we're going to overrun the neighborhood? We are a very, very small portion of the traffic that goes through there. And in fact, I think. A hotel where most people are not taking their own cars. You know, they may be being dropped off by Uber, coming in by path, that type of person, they're more likely to not have cars than potentially if we built a residential building here, which was as of right. So I do think, you know, when we look at the purposes of why a height, height restrictions out there. I don't believe that we're creating negative impacts on those, on on those aspects. We also need to show. You know, is this generally consistent with the neighborhood? Now, again, use, height variances and use variances. You can't point to it and say, this person got it, I deserve it. So there is no precedence. Each application is on its own. So, you know, on the flip side, I can't stand here and say. Look, they got eight stories, they got nine stories, they got four stories. We deserve it. But I would note again, the adjoining zones that we are have across the street from us on either side. Do allow for eight stories and I do believe there is an eight story building on the other side of, of, you know, seven to eight story, I think it's seven with a penthouse. On the other side of Jersey Avenue. So again, there can be buildings that are built similar size and similar, you know, stories as us. Again, we are nine, but we're not nine throughout. We have a little, a small, small portion that's nine, other areas, six, all the way down to five and four. So when I look at that evaluation, what we need to do is we need to look at. What purposes of zoning are we advancing? And again, then balancing that in terms of the negative aspects. Is there a negative aspect from the public's perspective? And is there a negative? Are we, are we invalidating or creating negative aspect to the master plan or the zoning ordinance? So from a positive perspective, I think you heard a wide range of positives that are brought about by this application from the applicant. You know, probably now almost three hours ago. You know, there are a number of items, you know, in terms of the school, the programming for the community, the artistic areas. That I think are all advancing purpose A, which is the health, safety and general welfare with this application. I also want to note that this site has almost 6,000 square feet of green roof areas, which I think is significant. Again, that's almost two, it's almost two and a half lots, you know, when you consider what the average lot is in the zone. Almost two and a half lots of green space that'll be on the roof that is an improvement from a stormwater management perspective. Additionally, we are taking pavement, you know, motor vehicle surface out of the site. And again, putting building, which means when water hits it, it's clean water versus mixing with oils and toxins on the ground. And that again, I think is advancing purpose A, which is the health, safety and welfare. I also think we are advancing purpose J, which promotes the conservation of historic sites. Again, while this is not a designated historic site or historic district, clearly this has been something that has, you know. This building on this corner has been there for almost 100 years and is, you know, basically as far as I'm concerned. You know, it has been a staple in the community and while it's not recognized historic. You've seen the care that's taken in terms of the window design, the materials being used, I think is clearly advancing purpose J of the of the purposes of zoning. I also believe we are advancing purpose I, which is the advancement of visual environment. Again, clearly I think this building is is a really good looking building by a great design team. And they're using what appears to be the, you know, really, really great materials. In addition, visual environment, I think also goes not only the building itself, but the area around the building. The larger sidewalk, the way that Maxwell is going to be treated, I think also is an enhancement. Again, not just for the building and property owner itself, but the public that uses the street and the transportation network around us. I also believe we're advancing purpose G, which is sufficient space for a variety of uses. I do believe, again, while we are seeking use variance here, a hotel is very, is would be a welcome to this location. Because of what it brings to the neighborhood, commercial districts and the downtown redevelopment district. Just across the street from us. And I think that is important to remember. That economic engine, besides the tax revenue, besides the sales tax revenue, but just from people being able to frequent the businesses around here. I think is very important as you get, you know, you know, five minute walk from the path up the pedestrian corridor. So I do believe that we are advancing those positive criteria that is outlined in the MLUL. In terms of negative criteria, again, we look at as part of this application. You know, are we creating a negative impact to the public? I think when we look at this application, it does not have that issue, those issues. Again, clearly, when you're building a building that exceeds height, shadowing is important and that's why we went through that activity. I'm not the architect, so I can't speak to how it all works. But clearly I'm relying on that expert witness who has stated and your board has reviewed. That the shadowing will not have a substantial negative impact. It's for a short period of time during just a few months in the morning hours of the winter. I also want to look at the other prongs of the negative criteria. I don't believe that this is going to create negative impact from a traffic or parking point of view. I don't believe that the noise will have a negative impact. We'll obviously comply with all state and city guidelines for noise. As part of any of the outdoor space on this property. And I believe again, that the height and scale of this building actually creates a landmark destination in a location that could use it. And I do think that that is not a negative criteria as it relates to the first prong of the negative. Of the review of the negative criteria. Terms of the zone plan, and I think this is an aspect of the application that we have carefully reviewed. We want to make sure that in allowing both the height variance and the use variance, that we are not disregarding and. Ignoring the zone plan. Clearly, hotels are not permitted in this zone. We are not fighting that in any way. But what I stated earlier in terms of why this is a unique site and a suitable site. Shows that this is one of the very few sites with maybe the Safran next to us, although they're clearly built and happy living there. That can support a hotel and has the right characteristics to support this type of development and this type of use. And again, I'll remind you, it's the lot size and the lot location that makes it uniquely suited, being at the terminus point. Being a cap lot, meaning that we have three frontages, again, makes it an ideal site for this type of. You know, landmark destination. And I'm not, you know, obviously landmark is also the applicant, but I'm using that term and and not that, and not that way. I also want to talk to the fact that your master plan speaks to items such as encouraging adaptive reuse. And that's what we're doing here as part of this application. As you heard from the our council. There was always, you know, we could have knocked it down and started over again. And that would have actually saved us a significant amount of height. I think the bank building itself is 45 feet. Trying to line up floors between our building and their building or that building and the proposed portion of the building. Does make for a bit of a challenge. You end up with higher floor to floor depths between floors in order to line things up. And that obviously was an option here, but we felt that was important because the master plan and zone plan talks about adaptive reuse. That we continue to. that we continue to have that type of um, building here and be able to reutilize and maintain that historic characteristics. We also know that in note, the master plan talks about supporting local artists and artistry. Again, you've seen that both on the inside of the building and the outside of the building, between the um, you know, the um, artist in residency, the local artist uh, um, locations inside the building. This is square footage that may be causing additional height, maybe be causing additional interior gross square foot. But we think that in helping advance the master plan, when you balance, we need a height variance. We have a hotel on this site, but you look at the fact that, look, we've got like a half a floor of this building dedicated to artistry, I think is important. I think when you look at the additional height and having potential and outside mural, I think again, that is something to balance that positive and negative criteria. And the fact that we've advanced, you know, some of your goals of your master plan in that way. Your master plan also again, seeks to celebrate and beautify the public realm. I think we're doing that here by having an infill development. Clearly no one is going to miss a parking lot with a drive through component in your Newark corridor, uh, Newark Avenue corridor here. And I think that, you know, taking out that kind of blight and beautifying it with this building, I think is important and does advance the purposes of the master plan. I do think that we are again, um, actually fitting the goals of the NC one zone. We are providing a gathering space. We are providing an area that will help encourage growth within our neighborhood uh, zones and our neighborhood nodes. And again, this, your master plan speaks to this being kind of a medium density um, uh, neighborhood node. That's what they speak the Newark Avenue corridor as a medium density node. And that says that medium density nodes typically have buildings of, up between four to eight stories. And again, while we are nine stories and not debating it, we clearly could make it eight, but have a worse shadowing effect on the property next to us. We could even make it seven. We had portions of this building that were, you know, a larger seventh floor, but we've cut that back. And in replacing that, you know, square footage, we've added a ninth story in an area that would not have a negative impact to our neighbors around us. So I do believe again, that we are um, complying with the benefits of the NC one zone. So overall, as part of this application, I believe that we do meet the criteria that is outlined in the Medici standard, which is what outlines what's required as part of a D one use variance approval, as well as the D six variance, which is the typical, uh, looking at the Grasso case. By us specifically evaluating uh, the potential negative impacts of both the use and height that we're seeking. I think we've identified the unique site suitability aspects for not only can the hotel use be supported here, but this site can support the additional height. And the height is really there because we're looking to reduce the impact to the neighborhood around us. Um, so overall, I do believe that this application does uh, satisfy those two standards. We do have a couple of other, I'd say, lower hanging fruit C variances. We have a rear yard setback where just our first floor violates, that's the parking floor. I think it's if we were, if we had a basically fifteen foot hole in our site in the middle of it, it would not allow for the additional parking in that parking level. Um, so we do have a, a full first floor, but everything above that floor complies with the rear yard setback. So really it's, I think you're balancing uh, a better zoning plan by really having a very limited violation in an area that allows for better vehicular storage, while the rest of the building clearly complies and actually has greater rear yard setback than what's required. And we also have the loading space uh, variance, which we don't have a dedicated loading space, but we do have the ability for the vehicle to unload inside our valet garage. Um, but we don't have a specific striped out area for it. And we've showed the ability for those vehicles to be able to get in and out without um, intruding on the traveling public. So I do believe those two C variances can also be granted by this board as part of this application. So again, overall, I do believe we meet the purposes of zoning. I don't believe we have substantial negative impacts. And I do believe we do meet the D one and D six uh, uh, variance criteria here.
Okay. Not done yet. Uh, we, uh, we need to address the, the, the number of stories that we're requesting. I know that's kind of part and parcel with the height, but if you could touch upon that, how that maybe blends in with the uh, the reasoning for the height. And that we are all, are also asking for relief from uh, the signage. Maximum permitted sign area illumination, if you could touch upon that.
Absolutely. Um, from a, from a uh, height perspective, again, you've heard significant discussion about height. Um, you know, there's both a foot measurement and a story measurement that's has your requirement in the code. Uh, obviously, the same reasons why we believe we need the foot measurement is why we also need the story measurement. Um, we are nine stories, again, where five is permitted uh, per zoning. Uh, again, you've heard our discussion, the fact that we are not building our five stories at twelve thousand square foot, basically block intervals. We are basically, we are taking some square footage away from each floor, including some of those lower floors. And basically that gets added on to the top, we have that nine stories. And again, all the shadowing effects, all that really comes down to the, the same discussion. Terms of uh, signage, again, we've been very cognizant to ensure um, that the signage here fits the building. I don't even know if the board, you know, even remembers or saw the signage uh, on the architectural plans, because I think it was very um, well placed. It was not, I think, gaudy on the property. Obviously, we are in a corner lot. We do kind of have two uses here. We have the restaurant use and the hotel use. You don't want the person walking in with their bags into the restaurant. And you don't want to confuse the person who's looking for the restaurant to be in the hotel. Uh, so again, uh, we are seeking some, some um, aspects of signage variance relief uh, because of that. And again, same thing with the way that the signs, signs are lit. Again, we want this to area to be, you know, a, a neighborhood beacon at the end of Newark Avenue that draws people to the location. That said, the signage is not gaudy, it fits the building. It just is that we have these two uses and a historic building that we're working with, or a building that has historic nature uh, that we're working with here.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. So that uh, completes our presentation.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Harrington, let's, let's do it this way. I forgot her last name, Ann?
Yeah, Ann.
Ann, there you are, Ann. Why don't you, i- i- if uh, this would be your opportunity, if you choose to cross examine any of the applicant's witnesses. Do you want to cross examine anyone?
Yes, I do, yes, please, thank you very much. And also, again, I'm just a member of the public, representing members of the public. So that other members of the public may very well have questions too.
No, no, let's start with you.
Right, we started and hopefully.
Yes, let's start with you.
That's fine.
You want to cross examine anyone? Yes.
Yes, I do. And hopefully I'll do as much as we can and we won't have dup- duplication. Um, so I would like to take the witnesses in order, I think that makes sense.
Logical, good. Who's first?
Okay, so who?
Well, it was Mr. Critella.
It was Mr. Mr. Critella was first.
Yes.
Um, and I actually, there he is. Do you, do you mind if he stays sitting, do you want to stay sitting down? And I'll stop here or we'll both, we'll both just talk here at the, I don't know if you have a portable mic.
No, Ann, just have him come up and question him, please.
We can just start, stand right here. So I had, I had questions about the operation. And again, I should say, this is, you know, a great project, but the problem is the location. And that's of course, you're not a lawyer, but that's what the, the law is, is written for. But you did a beautiful job talking about it, and I just have some questions about the operation. Um, so it, it seems that the actual hotel rooms are only about forty percent, roughly, of the, the area, not, not counting the restaurant. That, that as you talked about, the, the bedrooms are concentrated on the fifth, sixth, seventh floor and half of the fourth floor and half of the eighth floor. And I was just wondering, why is so much space devoted to the, I guess I would say that it's almost as if the hotel's an accessory used to all the other aspects of the program? Can you tell me why that, why that is?
Sure. So we did not want to create a room commodity, you know, where it's just rooms. You're competing on price, the, there's no amenities that make it attractive. Uh, when you have amenities like this, obviously it raises uh, what you can charge for a room. It also, you know, because it's creating a excitement, it creates a vibe, especially with the restaurant and the lobby. So we had looked at an as of right um, structure to do the rooms. And it just eliminated all the great things that would make the project special.
Um, and, and you mentioned a couple of those right now. Um, I wanted to ask about events. And by that I would mean, oh, you know better than I do here in the industry, a wedding, a convention, something special that people are coming to the hotel. Do you anticipate having events at the hotel?
So um, the property is not designed to do events. Events are a um, totally different animal when it comes to parking and traffic and the whole bit. This is designed, the only events that I really foresee there, artists in residence, you know, welcoming to the neighborhood or to hold events when we uh, rehang artwork in the gallery. But small personal events that are specific to the property, we will not be hosting weddings.
Would you be willing, would you be willing to have?
Absolutely.
To have that as a condition?
Absolutely.
And, and would you be, would you be willing to um, maybe work with a planning staff or maybe Mr. Lapaglia to, I, I don't want it to be just a wedding, oh, but this is a bar mitzvah, you know. I, I.
I understand.
Other, other types of similar types, because that was what we were going to get into, is the parking loads all of a sudden at once. You've got everybody parking all over the neighborhood. So if you would be willing to, 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 to work with us to make sure that those events won't. Uh, a question I had for you was, do you know what the seating capacity would be for the art gallery? The two big rooms of the art gallery, if people were to put banquet tables there?
I really don't, to be honest with you. I, you know, because it's never been something that we anticipated doing.
And so again, it sounded to me like essentially a use that was characterizable as a banquet hall. Y- y- you'd be willing, again, I'm not, I'm not trying to block you from anything you want. I'm trying to make it so that if we have objections to things that he wasn't planning to do anyway, those would be conditions. And again, running with the land, he wouldn't then be able to sell it as a banquet hall. Um, so I think that's, that's very, you know, helpful to hear. Um, in terms of, this might be a question for the architect and the engineer. I don't know if you know how the parking down in the pit, that mechanized parking, they're called puzzle parking after those little plastic puzzles where you move the squares. You have one open square and you move the, the squares. Do you, does that make sense? You know the puzzle parking term. Can, can you talk about how if potentially it were full? And again, maybe the architect or the engineer and someone with a car in the back wanted to get it out. What sort of maneuverings required?
All I know, the parking down below is automated and the car that you select to come up would come up. The parking above grade, you would have to, if somebody's parked in a three stack and they're on top, you got to remember valet is the one getting the car. So you would have to move the other cars, not below, but above, you would have to move.
And, and I think we're going to need more clarity on that because it just, all the puzzle parking things that I've looked at, it's only two ranks deep, because you have one open and it can slide forward. And then they have these weird cool tracks that can go back and forth. Um, so I think that is really um, most of the questions I have for you. You've listed all the uses you want to do. We've talked about some that might be able to be restricted that I think are the most worrying for the public. Um, I asked you about the events. I don't have a lot of stars on my notes for you, my stars are when I have to ask a question. Um, that then, and again, the other impacts on the, on the saffron. Um, I appreciate the redesign, I think those are questions for the architect and the engineer. So at the moment, I don't have any more questions for you. I tend to think this might be the one where the audience will, but those were the ones that I had wanted to ask. Thank you very much.
Any other, you have questions, cross examination of the other witnesses?
Yes, of course.
Then go right ahead.
Yes, okay. So this would be, this is the civil engineer, I think was, was next, Mr. Shavett. And, and I, I do have a bunch of, bunch of stars for you. Um, so here we go. The first question, um, and some of this is just because we hear it very quickly. Um, in raising Maxwell, um, my understanding from the traffic report was what they're asking, that the city's asking for bollards, because the difference between the sidewalk height and the street height, there's not going to be a curb difference anymore. So my understanding is the city is asking for bollards, that that was what they were asking for, and also for drainage. Did the city ask you to raise that payment?
You know, I, I don't recall whose original idea it was at this time, but no, it wasn't bollards. The, the, the idea was that it's not a very wide road and the sidewalks are narrow. And to have a, a better pedestrian path, it would be something that would be considered more like a shared path. So it would be vehicular shared with pedestrians. And so it would all be at the same level. Uh, it was not, it was, I don't think the word bollard ever came up, we're not proposing bollards in that area.
It's in their plan, they're asking you to put bollards in. That was why I was, I was wondering, their, their report from August fifth, I think that you alluded to. And again, because of the possible wanting to separate the pedestrians and the traffic a little bit, I understand. I don't know if the staffer who wrote the report is here, because I, I don't recognize people, but.
I would have to ask them exactly to, to explain where they would want the bollards. But I, the, the intent was not to separate the pedestrian from the vehicle with bollards. You already have a curb to do that, it would be self defeating, why, why bother?
That was what I.
I could see having bollards to delineate where the crosswalk ends so that somebody's not wandering onto the sidewalk as they pull into the intersection. And I can understand why you might want to have bollards there, just to clarify where Maxwell Street starts and ends and not, not so much to keep the pedestrians to the side, so to speak.
So, so, so again, and I may be characterizing, but to the extent that that report from August fifth says you can have bollards every six feet and they should be five feet away from the building, you would not want to do that.
No, no, along, along the length of Maxwell, no. I would think that would defeat the whole point of bringing the, the pavement up.
And that point of bringing the pavement up, I just want to make sure I understand, is so that pedestrians and vehicles all use the same parts of the street?
Exactly.
There's no longer a separation between pedestrians and vehicles?
It, well, it's obviously, it, it becomes more of a favorable environment for the pedestrians because they have a wider path. So obviously, a vehicle comes through there, has to respect the fact that if there's pedestrians, they have right of way and they would have to, to, to grant them, right of way, and give them a chance to move to the side if they're pulling through. But it does give more room for pedestrians to move through that area.
Um, are, are you aware and it may be in the, the traffic engineer's report of how heavy the traffic already is on Maxwell Avenue, Maxwell Street?
I, I don't have the numbers of, of, for the traffic.
I, I, I heard it, I heard it referred to, and I can't remember, it was you or one of the other witnesses, as a service road. Would you characterize it as a service road for, 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 for your project?
I, I think it serves more like a service road to, to, to a, a lot of those buildings that are in, in there. It's a, it's, you know, I'm sure there's people that are cutting through, but it's not a major thoroughfare and it's only one way.
Right, it's only one way. Yes, it's only, it's already, it's already constricted. One of the things that I saw on the, and again, I think it was engineering rather than architectural, was the turning, the truck that now is turning, whether it's a waste haulage truck or a laundry delivery or haulage truck or a food truck, if it's pulling in, it sure looked to me, and I apologize because we don't have the benefit of the plans anymore. If you recall, that, that truck essentially would have been jumping the curb if the curb were still there. Would, would you agree that raising the street makes it easier for trucks getting in and out of the building? They don't have to, they can drive on what was the sidewalk, they don't have to worry about jumping a curb.
Yeah, it does, bec- well, we, we had to work with the, the column replacement and the width of the garage door to, to make sure that the truck would be able to get in and out of that building. It, it would have, if we had a conventional curb, the curb cut would probably be have been a, a few feet wider than the actual door, if the door, I forget the dimensions offhand. If the door is twelve feet, the curb cut might have been sixteen feet in order to allow for that movement. But if it's all at the same level, that's not necessary, because there's no real defined curb cut.
Exactly, there's, it's flat. Um, I heard, and again, I think it was you, might have been the architect, say, um, the truck would pull in, but obviously there's, it's too tight to maneuver inside, it would then back out into Maxwell Street.
Right, we, we, we considered both ways of, of, of a vehicle backing in and then pulling out forward as opposed to pulling it forward and then backing out. We felt it was a safer and more convenient environment to pull in forward because there's always valet staff there. So once, once this truck is in and they need to leave, one of the valet workers can go behind the truck, make sure it's clear of pedestrians, guide him out, as opposed to them not knowing he's there and here he is trying to back in blind. So we, we, because we actually did the turn templates in both directions. and, and we decided it was a better system to pull in forward and back out.
Right, rather than in the one-way street to pass the entrance, going in the direction of travel and then back in.
Correct.
So, so that means you're going to have of, one of the valet parkers, one of the parking attendants to monitor the trucks backing up, kind of like when there's roadwork.
Exactly.
And do you happen to know, I don't know, does that violate the one-way directional ordinance requirement on that street?
Oh, I don't think so. I mean, you're only backing up 10 feet. I, I don't think that's in violation of...
But it is coming against the, the flow of traffic. And do you, do you know the measure off the top of your head? I would, as a layman, say it's pretty close to that intersection with Jersey. Do you, would you agree with that or say, no, 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 you've got to tell me the number of feet?
Oh, I don't, I don't know the number of feet offhand, but it's, it's quite a distance from, from the, from Jersey Street, from Jersey Avenue.
It's not, it's not right up next to it, but put it this way, it's a lot closer to Jersey than it is to the other street at the end of it.
It's not, it's not quite halfway, but it's quite a distance away. And it's, you're not going to back up all the way out and interfere with pedestrians that are walking along Jersey Avenue.
No, and I wasn't suggesting that. Okay, so the raised deck on the front of the building, how many, it, it wasn't fully clear and again, partly unfortunate because the illustration has trees along it. But that raised deck on the front on Jersey Avenue, how far above the sidewalk is that raised up? I think it's like three or four feet. I just wanted to make sure.
Just so you know, if you want to go through the plans later, on, on our slate Plan C3, we have a, a section of that proposed deck. And that deck is, uh, three foot nine inches above the sidewalk.
Okay, so I was right, between three and four feet. So people walking on the sidewalk, obviously they'd have to avoid it. They're not going to go, I mean, they might walk their dog under it, but they're not going under it.
Well, you can't get under it.
Right, right, I mean, you have to crawl.
No, you, there's not space to crawl under it.
It's going to be solid.
Right.
Oh, sorry. It's going to be solid.
Yes.
Okay. Crawl. And then he said it's going to be solid. And I repeated, it's going to be solid. And he said, yes. Do you need permission from the city to encroach into the right of way, the public right of way?
Yes. There's a franchise agreement that would, from my, my understanding is that it's a, it's a mayor and council decision, ultimately. It comes, it will get recommended by this board and then it would have to go to mayor or council. They can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that's the process.
Okay, so, so this board would have to recommend, despite the creation of the, what I heard called the pinch there, where it comes pretty close, that's why you want to move the bikes. And then they'd have to recommend that this encroach. And again, it's my understanding, and I know you're not a lawyer, the property line of the building is the wall of the building. It's not that the property line goes more and there's an easement. The property line, it is city property on that sidewalk. So they would need whatever the process is for that and maybe it does require this, as part of this hearing or, or different?
I, well, I don't believe this board can actually grant the franchise agreement. And I, I think they can make that recommendation to town council. But it's, it's similar to when a restaurant wants to put seating out on the, on the front sidewalk for, 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 for patrons.
Why don't you clarify this for us, Mr. Harrington?
It's a legal question. I mean, you can clarify, you know, a franchise ordinance. If you need a franchise ordinance as part of a site plan approval, it's put in as, as a condition of approval. The board, you don't approve it.
We don't grant it, no.
We'll grant it. And then you have to go to the city council and you file a petition and request for a franchise ordinance and the city council votes on it. It goes to all the department directors within the city and, and they recommend or not recommend it. And that's, the city council is the, is the body that would grant or deny franchise ordinance.
So that's the, this, that's the direction that the developer is going to go in? Is to put it, that's what they're planning, okay?
That's right. And I believe, I believe that's in the planners' report that, that any, any approval would be subject to a franchise ordinance being approved by the city council.
Okay. Does it, does an approval by this board count as an endorsement of that application for the franchise?
I would say it does because it's part, part and parcel of, you know, the planning department.
Okay, so just, just to be aware of that. That's essentially relief that the board is granting, that creates that narrowing. I wanted to know, and again, this might be for the architect. The Newark sidewalk is being widened. There's one drop-off space. We've seen the bus turning radiuses. I think we're going to have some evidence on that. Can you tell us why you're widening the Newark sidewalk? I just missed why that was.
The, the main purpose of that is to provide more space at that intersection. Right now, the radius is, is, is very generous. It's, but larger radius makes for easier turning movements for the vehicles, but it cuts back a lot of the sidewalk area. And that's a busy corner, especially with the, the bike station there. At one time, we thought of maybe trying to relocate that bike station elsewhere, but in the end, it was decided that, and, and I believe it was someone from planning staff that made the first suggestion to, to widen, widen the sidewalk, reduce the pavement width, provide more space for pedestrians and, and keep the bike station at that corner.
And can I ask, because I don't know, I'm not from Jersey City. Is there more pedestrians walking up and down Newark or walking on Jersey?
You'd have to ask the traffic.
Okay, I'll ask the traffic guy about that. Okay, and this is just one question. Did I understand correctly that the, the roof, the stormwater runoff and the sanitary sewer have a combined discharge in Jersey City?
I, I should have addressed stormwater in my original testimony, so I'll, I'll be glad to, to talk about it right now. It, first, to answer your question, it is city policy. It says a combined sewer area, which means that sewer mains carry both storm and sanitary flow in this area. There is the potential at some time in the future that they may be separated. And so all the buildings, the sewer line comes out of the building, the storm line comes out of the building as two separate lines. There are two cleanouts behind the curb. And once you get beyond the curb, they, they merge into each other as one pipe. So there's only one connection into the storm system, into the, into the, into the combined system. Depending on the size of the pipe, it goes directly in or goes into a manhole. In this case, it goes into an existing manhole that's there. But I will like to mention also that there was, there is a, uh, because of the parking lot being removed, the way the Jersey City ordinance is, is worded, the major development, which is, triggers the stormwater requirements, is based on either adding or replacing impervious area. And if it's more than 5,000 square feet, it becomes a major development. So this is a major development. But we are proposing 6,500 square feet of green roof. And that green roof reduces the flow so that we meet the requirements of the stormwater ordinance for those reductions for the two-year, the 10-year and the 100-year storms.
Okay, that's the reason we, and that's it? Thank you very much. Thank you.
If I could just redirect a question for, for Mark. I think it might clear up.
Yes, go right ahead. So, um, Mark, I'm showing you the, the August 5th report from the city traffic engineers. And it does say, or correct me if I'm wrong, it says it is recommended to include bollards. And, and it talks about the bollards. It doesn't say it's required, correct?
No, it says recommended.
Okay, and, and in your experience, when, when something is in one of these review agent letters that it says recommendation, is, is that something that you can discuss later with, with the engineering department?
Very often. And, and, and sometimes other staff members have a disagreement on some of these. And, and so we would want to make sure that all parties are in agreement to any revision that we might make to the plans in that regard.
Okay, and I'll ask you if, just to refresh your recollection, because, you know, you're testifying, not me, but do you recall having a subsequent conversation with engineering about not doing the bollards for the reasons you talked about?
I don't recall.
Okay.
So I think next is Mr. Cabayo. So you've also talked about all the different parts of this project.
Yes, I did.
So many parts. And as the architect, were you asked to design a building that could support, I think they call it keys, a number of hotel rooms? And were you asked to have a particular size of the building? So that, again, I'm using that it's 40% rooms, 60% other, not even including the restaurant. I, you know, I'm, I'm just a lawyer. And so was that part of your directive?
Uh, yes, it was.
Did you, did you have, um, any architectural concern about the need to, and correct me if I'm assuming something, to keep the rooms in sort of one core area? Basically floors five, six, seven, half of eight, half of four.
Right.
Um, was that to separate them from the other aspects of the program?
Uh, no. The, the directive was just to do a hotel. As a matter of fact, we started, when we first started, we had over 100 rooms. And then we started cutting back on rooms and adding more of the ancillary space that we have. You know, the, the art gallery, uh, you know, the Peloton, the, all, all of those different complements to, to the rooms. And, and it turned out that as we were doing that, the rooms were, the number of keys, okay, was being reduced, okay? Aside from that, as to the layout, we were looking for the best location for all these, all these rooms and all these, uh, other spaces. The, the rooms, as Mr. Cutella is saying, that were almost secondary to what we were doing because we were going to have rooms anyway. So it didn't matter where those rooms were as long as they had access to all these activities.
So essentially, you'd almost say, uh, the activities are primary, the rooms, I think I just heard you say sec- secondary.
Almost, yeah.
You've heard a couple of things about historic. I know, I, um, and, and, and I'm not trying to distract you. I'm just trying to make a, a clear record and I apologize for... I have, every, every stenographer and some of the judges of the state have said, "Am, will you slow down?" The capital one is, the, the, it, the bank is not a historic building currently.
It, it is not, it is not on the national register, no.
And, and it's not in a Jersey City historic district either?
I know it is not.
No, it's not. And you had, when you're talking about, um, I think power washing and maybe repointing and polishing the grills, although they'll be moved, um, you had said, "Our hope is it will become historically significant." And can you talk a little bit about that, basically bringing it into historical significance?
So, so the building itself is historically significant, okay? It's got, it's got some, some components, it's got some elements that make it historically significant. Now, the, the fact that it is not on the register, national register, the fact that it's not in the Jersey City, let's call it, register, doesn't mean that it doesn't have significance, okay? Uh, it, it, it probably just means that, you know, HPC hasn't gotten to it, okay? As, as an example. So, um, so, but we need to treat it as, as a historical building because we want to make sure that that building stays as a historically significant building in the neighborhood.
Is that, is, and is that part of, like, I guess I would say the programmatic for the restaurant? And I'm getting to the business that it's a beacon that you could, it's part of, you'll be using that as the restaurant, part of that historic beauty?
Correct.
You'll be using it for the restaurant. And... And you said people will be like, in the neighborhood, be able to sort of orient themselves, know where they're going by seeing this building?
Well, it, it's one of the aspects that we, that we want to have. I mean, it's, it's a very prominent corner. Uh, we want to do a building that it's actually significant in that corner, right? I mean, you, you could do a, a smaller building and it'd be, you know, in technical terms, black, right? So we, we, we wanted to get away from that. I wanted to do something that was significant, that was, uh, something that would be iconic.
So, so, right, so, so Mr. Cutella talked about excitement and buzz. You've just said, I think, I, I characterized this, you don't want a blah building. The, and it sounds like it's the size, the prominence, maybe the height, although you're moving, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul on a little bit of the height, I, I know that. But that will all lend itself to the excitement, the buzz, the significance, the iconic nature of it.
I, I would say so, yeah.
And that was a, a wood. Right, I'm, I'm definite, in addition to everything else, so I would and wouldn't and did and didn't.
I would say so, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Do you know about the maneuvering of the mechanical parking pit?
So, so yeah, so this is what they call a, a fully automated or a robotic parking, right? So you don't need a human to actually move cars around. One of those spaces is vacant and that allows for the different movements within that parking space. That was actually laid out by one of our consultants. So it, it is, it does work.
And it, and it works, it leaves one space open.
Right.
And then it moves, just like that little puzzle, it moves them all around.
Exactly.
We've asked about the art gallery and the use for banquets. My understanding is Mr. Cutella says that it's not, that he's happy with a, a condition there. The, the, this may have been a, a throwaway line, the, the idea that the recording artists can use the Peloton room. Is the Peloton room, um, is it going to be used by anyone who's not staying in the hotel or otherwise utilizing some other programmatic aspect of the hotel?
That's a question for Mr. Cutella.
Okay, Mr. Cutella?
Sure, so it will be used for hotel guests. And we would also make it available on day passes for the immediate community. We're thinking two-block radius.
And is that a separate business? I don't know how Peloton was a separate business.
Not a business, no.
So would they have to have their own Peloton account, but they could come in and ride on the bike? I guess, is, is that how it works?
That would be recommended, obviously, but that Peloton does have a program for hotels. It kind of introduces the whole system to people.
To people, and that you could buy a day pass for that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
If you're local.
Does local mean living in Jersey City?
Two-block radius.
Two blocks, okay. Okay, seating capacity, I asked. Oh, uh, you were talked about, um, the views from the main lobby, that the, that there's a, there's a lobby on the, on the grand floor, but there's a main lobby's on the fourth floor. It's the half of the fourth floor that's not, that's not ribs. And the views from there. And this is going to be a little bit, obviously you can't, you know, hover in midair suspended by a drone to see those views. But I take it you've done studies that say, yeah, the views looking east from even the fourth floor of the proposed building are going to be pretty nice.
So, so you're going to have views, right, you're going to have views on the fourth floor and you're going to have the Newark corridor that's actually a pedestrian corridor, right? So, so that, that's where you're going to go. Jersey City has a myriad of tall buildings. So I'm not sure beyond those tall buildings, if you're going to be able to see anything, but at least you'll have that view.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting you can see the Hudson. I think what we see is Jersey City is skyline now. We don't necessarily see New York. But that's the, the view from, from like roughly the fourth story. I, one of the things I noticed going over the, um, the plans is that, leaving aside the fact that the existing bank building has, I think, a 20-foot story at some point, it, it has big ceilings. That the, the newer wing of the building, I'll say, the non-bank wing, um, the stories are 12, 13 or 14 feet. Can you talk a little bit about why those stories are so spacious?
So, so the, the first thing is, you know, we have a building that, an existing building that's 45 foot long, uh, 45 foot tall, right? So, so we, the, the first thing we did was actually make, make sure that we had enough headroom for the parking system, not the one in the basement, the one on the first floor. And then from there up, we actually made the rooms hide in such a way that we could actually get to, uh, that lobby on the fourth floor, right? So once we, once we did that, going from there, given the, the structural system that we're thinking about and the height of the rooms, we decided that this was the height of the building.
Okay. And, and so, and again, correct me if I'm, it's 119-point something. It's roughly 120 feet tall, but nine stories, but 120 feet tall, which would be, well, 10-foot stories, 10, 12-foot stories, math.
Okay, I'll, I'll leave math at you.
I was going to say, you're an architect. I didn't, I wasn't an architect because I couldn't do simple math. The green wall, um, I've read in a note that it's not going to be plants anymore because there was some concern that plants might die, that it's just going to be paintings or a mural. Do you know about that?
The mural, that, is that what I?
Yeah, somebody testified, if someone testified about a green wall with plants. I know the mural, the big mural that faces west, the tall one. But on the, on the Newark Avenue side, it had been going to be a green wall. I know there was some concern among staff that green walls, you know, six months of the year in New Jersey, they're, they're dead. And there was a note on one of the plans, but I can't remember if it's the most recent plan or if it's the summer plan that said, no, we're not going to do the green wall. You don't have to worry about the plants. We'll have art or we'll have a mural instead. Do you?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay. So then we're going to the, to the shadow studies.
Okay.
And again, there's, there's, if people will remember, the, the purple on the plans shows the, the new shadow, basically, if you will. The very, very first January 21st at 9:00 AM, there's a little bit of tan. Was that intended to be purple and it just came out tan?
I, I think what we're trying to do at that point is just take the difference between what the, the shadow was that was cast by the saffron itself. that was cast by, uh, the saffron itself.
Right.
Versus what we would have cast, uh, based on, you know, that, the, the angle of the sun at that point.
And I
The angle of the sun at that point.
Um, I, I think it's probably, it's hard to tell whether it was meant to be purple or gray, but I think the ten AM one shows whatever it was, it is less by ten.
It recedes, yeah.
It recedes, it recedes. Um, and when you say the courtyards in the shade, are you talking about just the ground of the courtyard or also the walls, particularly the south facing wall of the inner courtyard?
So, so from the shadow study, you, you saw that we actually have portions of that wall and sometimes the entire wall in gray. It, it, it is not just at the bottom, it's actually on the wall.
Right, in gray or in gray or in purple. Um, okay, and I confused a lot of people talking about the south wing and the north wing myself. I should have called them Maxwell and Newark.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, no, I was a thing, the south facing wall of the north wing of the building. People would say, "What?" Um, the, at the end, there was that shadow movie, that wasn't part of the plans.
That's correct.
Um, the plans, it seemed to me, didn't really, um, explore the effect of the shadows on Newark because it was just the same, every single picture is the same on Newark. So you can tell they haven't been doing that. But it looked as if those movies do show the shadows cast on Newark by the hundred and twenty foot portion of the building, I'll say, with, because the sun is always in the south. Did you, did you intend to model those? Uh, is that something that the board members or even the public can look at and say?
Well, we, we, we did a shadow study, uh, mainly because
Of us?
Right, the, the saffron basically kept requesting it more than anything else, right? So, so we did that. Now, we did that movie, uh, just to show a wider range of shadows. And, uh, yes, we, we are casting shadows, absolutely.
Okay, um, and that's, that's all for you, I'm not, onto traffic.
That's it.
Great, thank you.
Onto redirect.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Redirect, go ahead, Mr. Harrington.
Now, I, I, I just want to try to clear up the, the record with some questions, um, uh,
Clear up the wall.
Oh, the green wall, yeah, I mean, uh, well, the green wall, is your understanding, it's going to be natural plantings?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay. Um, and then that's at the, that's on the Newark Avenue facade.
That is correct.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, when we talked about, you know, the activities and the design that you did for, for the building, um, the design of, of the areas for the activities, that's, that's important, right?
Yes, it is.
But, but it's not the primary use or reason for this project, is that correct?
No, that, that, that is correct. I, I was merely just trying to say that, uh, as, as we were going along, that the, look, the, the keys are what this is all about. But it, it became, once we started doing the design, it became more secondary to all of the other spaces because we needed to have those spaces, uh, from the point of view of where they were.
And i- is it fair to say then, these additional amenity spaces and areas and uses you put within this building or your program within the building helps to make this a unique boutique hotel?
Definitely, that was the whole purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, do you know, and while we're on, I guess, re-director, maybe a question for Mr. Crotella. Um, I've heard one of the witnesses talk about a destination, right? People are gonna come to this place. Um, do you know, are those ancillary uses part of what would bring people to use the hotel? Or are, I guess I'll, I'll stop there, are those ancillary uses part of what will bring people to the hotel?
So, there's a hotel in Manhattan called the Ace Hotel. And the Ace Hotel's been around for a while now, but it was a hotel that really set a precedence for being a community hotel. And people want to go there because people want to experience what the community is all about. So when I hired Jose and his firm, that was really the mission. We wanted to create a newer version of what the Ace Hotel is. But the amenities are about attracting people, the locals, and attracting people
Into the, into the rooms, you hope. You hope, let the back reflect, two thumbs up for attracting people to the rooms. Do you know, do you know Frank, can I, can I call you Frank?
Sure, sure.
Um, do you know the, the address of the Ace?
I don't.
I don't either, I think it's in Manhattan, I want to say the west side, but that
There's several of them now, but yeah.
But there's a bunch, okay, thanks, and we, we can find that out.
Let's Google.
Yeah, oh, I can Google, doesn't it go on the Google Meet Ace Hotel?
Can we get to the next witness, because it's running late on time?
Okay.
Thank you. I know.
And, next, yeah. Well, yeah, that's it, no, I'm, I'm going fast. Oh, boy, I'm normally in the suburbs, it's six hearings, you know, something like this. Um, here you go, and you are Matthew Sattler.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and I am gonna, I think, start on traffic and then go on, then go on planning. Um, so this, seven more, I was gonna Um, I wanted to ask you about, you said, the Grove Street path is a, is a relatively sh- short walk. I don't know, you characterized this as five minutes, I mean, it is what it is. Um, there's a Marriott there, am I correct about that?
Correct, I think it's Canopy brand, but Marriott Hotel.
But Marriott. Um, do you have any indication, maybe this is for Mr. Crotella, but, but you might, in your traffic studies, um, is there a need for hotel rooms in this, again, general area that, that includes the path and the, the hotels there?
Again, I, I have not done a market study, so I can't speak directly to it, but again, I think Mr. Crotella had mentioned he had spoken to someone that owns hotels in Jersey City and that they are, you know, back at capacity after COVID.
Yeah, I think he said vibrant, vibrant capacity. Um, and we've done that, we've done that. Um, can you talk about the, what's, which is safer in Maxwell? With, with or without bollards, do you think?
I agree that at the entrance to Maxwell, bollards probably makes sense just to define where someone should be turning. As you get down Maxwell, again, the point is that the cars are going so slow anyway that I don't think the purpose is to have a defined delineation between the sidewalk area and the street. But again, obviously we'll work with city staff. If city staff insists on it, we'll obviously install it.
Did you, did you do, did you do speed radar gun, whatever you would use, speed calculations for the, for Maxwell Street?
No, we did not.
You did not, okay. Um, um, your testimony about how many parked cars a day? Um, I am presuming, now that I've heard from Mr. Crotella, that that does not include events such as banquets, weddings, bar mitzvahs, conventions. And is it true that those sorts of events, as he and I were talking, but you're the expert, would be anticipated to bring a lot of people, most of them, many of them in cars, all at once?
Events that have defined start and end times obviously have higher peaks. In terms of parking, we are seeing less and less, especially urban events in terms of individual cars being driven and parked versus Uber and other means. But you would see peaking that you wouldn't see at a general hotel or restaurant.
Um, do you know how many? Have you talked to Mr. Crotella about how many deliveries he would expect for his, for his use, for the full use?
The anticipation is one or two a day, but as he mentioned to me, is that the purveyors that he would use, let's say for the restaurant, are likely already delivering to the area, to the restaurants on Newark, so it wouldn't necessarily be two new delivery trucks, it could just be they're running to both sides of the street type of thing.
And that includes, stop me for a minute, that includes food, um, uh, any equipment that's, that's disposable. I mean, obviously plates you wash on site, plants, food, laun- laundry, um, waste haulage, um, anything, band equipment, I guess, if people are coming in.
Correct, food, linens would be the big ones. Garbage is usually, as needed, could be two to three times a week. Uh, but the, the food and linens would be once or twice a day when you add them all in.
Right, because you've got seventy-two rooms in a restaurant, right? Um, um, so the height, um, did I hear, I heard you say, but I, then I missed a couple of it. And I've got to say, for fast talking, oh my God, I, even more so now, I should slow down if I can. Um, I heard you say, "The height really is about shadow casting." I, am I, is, is there any other reason for zones to have consistent height limits?
Again, I, shadowing, I think, is a key. In some locations, it can be a view shed analysis. Again, if we were closer to the Hudson or up on the cliffs, I think that would be more of a, a targeted purpose. I think in this area, to me, it's shadow intensity, uh, those characteristics would be most in line.
Do you know how many of the surrounding buildings actually have roof, you know, rooftops where, I mean, you had your own photographs of our thing with the chaise lounges, where you can go and sit? Do you know how many that is?
I don't know, I imagine most of the newer buildings were, but some of the, you know, hundred-year-old walk-ups likely do not.
Do you know, do you know what the tar beach is?
Uh, I, I have heard of it, yes, yes.
Tar beach, that's having, going up to your roof. Um, and so you had mentioned an eight-story building being permitted in the redevelopment zone immediately to the east. It's a long lo- it basically takes on that point that the bank cuts off and then goes. My understanding from looking at the zoning map, and again, you had the, the, you know, street view map, is that, yes, the, the zoning map, is that there is one little area in that zone that permits an eight-foot tall building, but it's at the far end of that long east-west zone.
Eight-story building, that eight-foot tall, but yes, and I believe you could have, uh, penthouse and seven in areas closer to our area.
Yeah, you're right. And do those also have height limits? Again, it's eight stories, but it's how many feet?
I bo- my
I think it's seventy-five, I, I, I remember the table, I think it's seventy-five, I just don't, I'm not trying to trip you up. And so again, um, my point is that that goes back to the voluntary, very large stories, make it, make it taller. Um, uh, and I'm trying to go through here quickly and skip questions that I think, you know, my planner can deal with or the public can deal with. Um, uh, you talked about how this is right in the middle of multiple zones. Um, and that while it is not a historic zone, are you familiar with the fact that it really is in the middle of six historic districts?
Yeah, definitely two close by and then six surrounding.
Right, okay. And do you know the height limits in those districts? Again, I'm not trying to trip you, just in case you do.
Again, I know that many of the districts around us are likely five-story districts or four-story, depending on if it's residential, non-residential. That seems to be the prevailing as you go off of Newark outside of certain redevelopment zones.
And, and are you familiar with the planning documents, including the historic overlays, that say this is for consistency with the historic urban fabric?
Yes.
Yes. Um, we've done that. Um, I heard you say you need to, you do need to show that your project would be generally consistent with the neighborhood and that it would not set a legal precedent, and
I mean, no, no application sets a legal precedent in the sense that, again, you could point to one and say, "They have it. We should get it." Each application is reviewed by these boards independently on their own facts. And again, I, you know, so no matter what, I don't believe that this would be a precedent-setting case.
Okay, um, has, you used the word blight to characterize the bank's parking lot? Has that determination been made?
I would say that's it, that would be lowercase b in the sense that
Lowercase b, colloquial b, colloquial b. Um, okay, do you, do you know what the hours of operation of the hotel and particularly the ancillary uses would be?
I think that's probably best for Frank to answer.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, the hotel rooms are used twenty-four hours, but the ancillary would probably be better.
I guess what I should ask is, if, since you don't know that, and, and I can ask Frank, but did that form any part of your analysis?
From a zoning or a traffic perspective?
Uh, zoning.
From a zoning, no, from a traffic perspective, I look at the peak hours on the road and if the podcasting was open until ten PM versus nine PM, wouldn't make a difference from an intensity standpoint. I do know that we would obviously limit the outdoor spaces. I think, you know, the city, I think, even has an ordinance, it may be eleven o'clock, whatever the, the timeframe is. So I know that would have a limit in terms of the time that the outdoor space could be used.
Okay. If you guys would indulge me, I'm just gonna check with Cray for a minute because we heard a lot in oral testimony that was not in the principal point statement. So I've had to do this winging it with a
Go ahead, go right ahead.
I just want to make sure I haven't missed anything.
Missed that Harrington. I have, I have a question for you, Mr. Harrington.
Okay, then I am
You're good.
I am done with my questions, thank you.
All right, then, hold on, Mr. Harrington. We're obviously going to continue this, that, at a next meeting, which I think is November fourteenth. My question to you is, are all your witnesses available on November fourteenth?
No.
Okay, and who is not?
Uh, Mr. Carballo, he's, he's away that, that, that day.
Okay, so then, then my, in my little logical mind, what has to happen next is, since Anne has finished cross-examining your witnesses, now the public can cross-examine your witnesses and then the, uh, the commissioners here can cross-examine your witnesses. So, if the only person not available on the fourteenth is Mr. Caraballo?
Carballo.
Carballo. So why don't we ask the public if anyone has a question for Mr. Carballo? And if not, if our commissioners have a question for him, that'll be fine. And we'll do that, and then, because I think Bridget might have had it for today.
Understood.
So, uh, it's almost two hours without, yeah, you don't want to take a break, do you? Yeah, do you want to take a break?
No.
And do this?
No.
Well, we'll find out. Does anyone from the public have a question just for Mr. Carballo? Not an opinion, just a question for him. Anyone?
For the architect.
You have a question for the architect?
Yeah, if you have a question, please come up to the podium.
Want to take a break then? All right, then we'll take a break.
So we're gonna take a break.
We'll take a ten-minute break, okay?
It's, uh, we'll be back at, uh, it's ten eleven, let's come back at, uh, ten twenty.
Yeah, okay. Okay, sorry. Well, I
In Spanish, it's caraballo. Okay, caraballo. Okay, at this time, we will, um, have questions for Mr. Caraballo. Um, everyone, when you come to the mic, please state your name and address. And you will have one question each, because we are way over this evening. Um, and you'll have an opportunity to come back in November at our meeting and ask questions of everyone else. So if there's anyone who has a question for Mr. Caraballo, could you please come up to the mic? No, no, no.
Mm-hmm.
Please state your name and address, you have one question.
Peyton, spell your name, sure.
Good evening, Conrad Batog. First name is spelled K-O-N-R-A-D, last name Batog, B-A-T-O-G.
And your address?
Two seventeen Newark Avenue, apartment one zero seven.
Hmm?
Oh. And I just want to
That's the saffron, yes.
Oh, wait, if that's the saffron building, you have an attorney who's speaking for you, so we don't need to hear you.
It's not my attorney.
Well Hang on, hang on, and Conrad, I'm very sorry, we, we went over this. Do you, can you tell me quickly your question?
I, I just wanted to ask whether the building is gonna block views from the top of the saffron.
We're gonna cover that in our, in our testimony.
But I, I wanna, I want to
They're gonna say it's not.
Well, I, but I
Okay, let's have the next, the next person, please.
This is not reportable.
Yes, I know.
I need one person at a time.
I know. Okay, and I apologize, I should have realized that was Conrad. Conrad wanted to ask you, will your project block views from the saffron roof?
It will block some views, obviously we're higher than that, it will block some views, but we've actually worked with the building to maximize the views that are gonna be left.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who has a question? Please state your full name and your address.
Sure, Cecilia Deleon, sure.
One on the podium.
Eighty-five Bright Street, Jersey City.
Huh?
Okay, you have to spell your name, everybody. Thank you. Um, I just wanted a clarification on the fins that you have around the building? Are they lit, what's the material, how they're attached?
So, so those are, those are, I'm sorry, those are aluminum fins and they will have a dim light at the end on the edge, that's about it.
On the entire edge, like a line?
On the edge, yes, like a line.
LED?
LED.
Color-changing?
No.
Okay, and, like, on every night, controllable?
Controllable, correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the public for the architect?
Yes, please come to the podium. Please say your name and spell it, and also give us your address.
Hi, my name is Parakrim Mujumdar. It's a difficult name, so it's P for Papa, A for Alpha, R for Romeo, A for Alpha, K for Kilo, R for Romeo.
Just say the letters, okay?
K. Um, I'll start from beginning, yeah.
Yeah.
P-A-R-A-K P-A-R-A-K-R-A-M. And my second name is M-A-J-U-M-D-A-R.
Thank you.
My address is 258 Barrow Street. That's like a wheelbarrow, Barrow.
Yes.
Yeah, so my question was about the way the building looks. And, you know, it, it's all subjective, but would you agree that the, like, the buil- the part that you're building on top of the historic portion looks completely different from the building and, like, from the neighborhood? And it's subjective, but like, why did you, like, kind of like, make it deliberately different? If, if you agree with that opinion, like, what was your thinking behind it?
That was two questions, by the way. So, so yes, I, I, I do agree that, that it looks completely different, okay? And the reason I did that is I wanted to maintain the historically significant building on its own, to be able to stand on its own. If, if I copied that building, it would, that historically, that, that bank building, will lose its value. So, so you do a contrast, so you know what's old and what's new. Okay, that's, that's why, why I did it.
Anyone else from the public have a question for the architect?
Okay, please state your name, spell your name, and give us your address.
Thomas Ogorzalek, T-H-O-M-A-S-O-G-O-R-Z-A-L-E-K. O-G-O-R-Z-A-L-E-K, 85 Bright Street. Just a clarification. On your detail for the, for the old windows along the Jersey Avenue side, there's a detail that says some of the glass is going to stay, and then you have a note about a nano-wall that's retractable, but there was nothing on the drawing, so I couldn't quite understand it.
Right, so basically, what we're doing is we're taking half the window, or just about half the window, the bottom part of the window?
Bottom half.
Right, and we'll create a wall that opens up so that there's complete...
I, I know what a nano-wall is.
Right, so, so now we have a, a complete, you know, access to the outside.
So you'll just, you'll keep the top fixed?
Correct, yes.
And the bottom, the bottom is a removable wall system?
The bottom is a what?
The bottom is a removable wall system, but it wasn't clear on the drawing, because there was a note to just a blank space on the sheet. Just checking.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? How about any of the commissioners have a question?
Let me close the public portion.
Oh, we'll close the public.
At this...
You have a question for the architect? Okay.
I was wondering...
Your name and address, please, spell it.
I should know better. Shireen McCormick, it's S-H-I-R-I-N-M-A-C-C-O-R-M-A-C-K.
And your address?
130 Glenwood Ave. So, I've studied historic preservation, and I learned that it's very important to only make changes to historic structures that can be undone, so that the integrity is preserved. While this building is not landmarked as historic, everyone seems to have thus far acknowledged that it does have historic significance. So I was just wondering about the windows. I noticed that the, the one window was pointed out as, you know, it will remain the way that it always has been, the way the building was designed. And the others along Jersey will go down to the ground. There's railings, there's wrought iron railings along all of those now, and I was just curious what will happen to those railings? Will they be used at the ground level or somewhere else?
They, they will be reused, and I, you might have missed when I said that. Basically, what we're doing is taking the bottom of the windows and moving them out. So, so we're using the, you know, the same railings, basically, if we can save the same granite that is being used. So, so yeah, we're actually trying to preserve as much of the building as possible.
Okay, so they'll be, they'll be moved out?
So we're moving it, we're moving it out, because we have a deck, a dining deck.
Right, right.
So we're using that as railing.
The railings will be part of the deck?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who has any questions at this moment? Is that a question for the architect?
No, I think it's a general question. Francisco can answer that question.
Okay.
Any other questions for the architect from the public?
No.
So we'll close the public questioning for the architect.
This may be for the architect, and I apologize, this is from one of the people I represent. They say, because sound travels in all directions, there's already been testimony. I'm sorry, there's, there's, there's already been testimony...
Just ask your question, please.
There's already been testimony that the, there will be, the ninth-floor party programs, if you will, are going to be inside. Is there any provision to require guests to stay inside and not come outside, to the outside parts of the ninth floor for their partying activities?
So, so the, the only part of the ninth floor where you can come out is to the front on Jersey Avenue, not to the back. So that, so you're fronting the street, not the neighbors.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, now, how about any commissioners?
At this time, I'd like to close the public portion of our meeting, and now ask our commissioners if they have a question. No comments will be made tonight, we'll just have a question for...
Just for this architect?
Right.
Because he won't be back on November 14th. Question for him?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. In the, in your slides, the pool in your architectural drawings seems like it's an open pool, but yet in some of the drawings, I mean, in some of your slides, it looks like it's an enclosed pool. Is it open, open air or enclosed?
It's, it's open.
Okay, all right, that's the one, because it, just trying to clear that out. I'm assuming, obviously, in your shadow studies, the one thing I guess we had to consider, and you did, is the fact that at certain months, when you have daylight savings time, on one particular day, 4:00 can mean something different than 5:00. So I'm assuming all that was incorporated into that.
Right, so again, that's part of the program, the program takes a letting account.
One, in your rearrangement of the, the latest version, approximately, what percentage or fraction would you say that you removed from that southern side to accommodate the shadow studies? In terms, I guess, it's from floors five through eight, like...
Yeah, so we, we removed three floors. Percentage-wise, I, I really couldn't tell you. But it's, it's at least 25%.
Yeah, it looked like it was about 30%, so I just wanted to get an idea of that. And I have to ask this question, because my first bank account as a kid was in that bank. When I was there, I used to go with my grandmother to that bank. At that point, by the way, for clarification, it was originally the Trust Company in New Jersey, then Norfolk Bank, then Capital. So, just want to make that clear.
Yes.
I think I still have my passbook at home, you had to get your interest in there. But anyway, are you going to keep the vault? And what's going to happen to the vault?
I was going to accent that one.
We are going to keep the vault, and if you ask Mr. Cattella how he's going to use it, he'll give you the answer for that.
Of course.
Oh, it is?
What else?
I had my, I had my...
I just need to know what's happened to that vault.
Do any other commissioners have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, I do just have one question. You talked about the franchise ordinance where it'll come down in front of the wall, where you're going to... How far out onto the sidewalk will that come? You know, because that's a pedestrian walkway right there. So how far out is it going to come to infringe on that pedestrian walkway?
I believe it's about six feet.
Which leaves how much for the pedestrians to walk?
I think the...
Okay, then I'll ask it the next time, that's the... Okay.
I, I apologize, it's...
No. Yes, my question was how far out and how much of the walkway, the pedestrian walkway, will remain?
I believe the civil engineer will have the answer for that.
Okay, then I can, then I will not ask that question. I will wait until next time, okay?
Okay.
If there's no other questions, I'd like to ask for a, a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I hear a second? Okay, meeting adjourned, we'll see everyone back here hopefully on November 14th. 14th, and as Francisco said, don't forget to vote. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
So much for my run of good luck, huh? This really...
We really thought you were helping us, now we know.
Really, really trashed it tonight, huh? Right? Normally, I'm, I'm good for 20, 30 minutes, you know? I've got a month, months, two, three months' worth of, of meaning in me now.
I hope you get all those other things pushed, man. Otherwise, it'll be midnight. Okay, are we really going for a drink? All right, we never go, we just... Come on, can I go?
We're not, you know, in the old days, Catherine, we'd stay till midnight.